Okay, seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. We can do roll call when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Here.
Loest. Kettering.
Here.
Hummel.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
All right, everybody had a chance to go over the minutes from the previous meeting. Unless there's any changes to the minutes, I'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Bye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. Okay, is there anything to be added to the agenda or changed about the agenda?
No.
Okay. And seeing that, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Opposed? And Sherri's joined the meeting.
Yes.
All right, so now we're on to conflict of interest declarations. We can start with Sherri.
None. Loest.
None.
Kettering.
None. Welsh.
None. Barkle.
None. Hummel.
None. Nelson.
None. Clark.
All right. First agenda item, scheduled for seven oh five, so we have a few minutes.
We can do that, replat.
Okay, let's move up the plat. Owing's Hoff replat.
Koning Schaff's own both lots. This one and this one. They're just plating them both together so they can put an accessory structure here. They're both conforming lots now, so it's even larger.
And then basically putting them together, that way they can meet setbacks and everything for.
Yep, correct. It would eliminate that middle line, but they'll meet all the rest of the setbacks.
All right, looks pretty straightforward. Anything else to add? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we can vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. And we've just gotta wait till seven oh five now. Okay, so our first agenda item then is the Coble conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting conditional use permit to build an accessory structure in a high-density residential district that exceeds maximum aggregate square footage of sixteen hundred square feet. Applicant wishes to build an accessory structure that is twenty-three hundred and four square feet per Article eight, section eighteen oh seven, and Article eighteen, section eighteen oh five, and Article nineteen. Section nineteen oh five said property is legally described as CMP first edition in the northwest quarter, southeast quarter of section twenty-seven. T ninety-five north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. The nine-one-one address is two-two-one Beaver Beach Road, Utica.
I don't know if you remember a while back, Cobley's owned six lots that are all non-conforming. They replatted into two separate lots. So there's actually one lot here and one lot here. They want to, oops, build their storage building on the south lot. It's a little bigger than, it's high-density residential, very small lots. That's why they're asking for a little bigger, little bigger building, store a boat or something.
Meets the sidewall height and all the setbacks and everything, only thing is just the square footage.
They had to go long and narrow because there's a floodplain issue on the west side. So they meet the setbacks, but it's gonna be tight.
So then are you gonna have to build new access to the lot, to the building, or?
No, that's, we don't have to. We're gonna use our same approach that we're going right now. And what we're doing is.
Would you like to come up to the podium and state your name for the record?
My name's Gary Cobley and I'm applying for this permit. We're moving over here permanently because we sold our house in Vermillion. So I'm going from a seven-stall garage to probably, we're going for a thirty-six by sixty-four shop. I can build a thirty-two by fifty, but I'd like to go a little bigger just for vehicles and our toys that we have there. And we'll meet all the setbacks that you guys are stating for, you know, from the road, from the river, lake, from each side of the property line. And we're not gonna go any higher than twelve feet, our walls. But we just wanna go a little bigger so we can store our vehicles in there and our jet skis and boats and stuff like that. But like I said, it's, we're gonna have the same access that we have now for our property. There's not gonna be another access there. It's gonna be the same road in. It's just gonna come in from the south and we're gonna face it to the north and south along the road, thirty feet off the road. So like I said, we're just trying to get residential over here now because we're moving over here permanently. So we just wanna make sure that we have room for our storage and for our vehicles so we know how to park them out, no snow.
Now is it going to share utilities with current buildings and everything, or is everything, it's not gonna have any kind of utilities in it, or?
Yes, we'll have just power in there, you know, far as power and then probably heat. That's all it's gonna have in there. And we're just gonna use the same, from our lot we have now, we're gonna use the same utilities. So we're not gonna bring in new power in there and nothing like that. We're just gonna pull it off the same meter. And then our propane, we'll just have a propane tank there for that. And we'll pull that off our, what we have out there now is our trailer house and stuff like that. We're gonna pull the propane line and stuff like that, so.
Have you had any input from any of the neighbors?
I've had some inputs. Everyone's fine with it. One guy, he's a lawyer here, Mike Stevens, he come out and he was gonna, who's building out there? Well, then he heard it was me and he was like happy that I was doing it because I'm trying to improve the property out there. You know, I'm cleaning up, doing everything I can. And he was like, I have no objections to that. All the other neighbors I've talked to, they have no objections as far as what we wanna do because we're trying to make it more livable and cleaner and stuff like that. We're just trying to get rid of, so you don't see our stuff outside all the time, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
All right, thanks.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the time. Thanks, guys.
Bill, did you have anything else to add?
Nope, you pretty much summed it up. Nobody's contacted us with any issues.
Then I guess I would open it up to any public comment on this particular conditional use permit. Seeing none, I'll close public comment right before discussion. So it is listed in our section eight oh seven that the one accessory structure exceeding sixteen hundred square feet is conditional use permit. And we can do that. Going through the checklist, ingress egress, we address that. Off-rideway parking or any of that is all the same, cleaning up everything out there. As far as utilities, services, everything's pretty much going to be shared with current structures, all going to be the same. Generally, I think it looks compatible because you do see a mixture of different buildings and uses out in the area. Does anybody have anything to add? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hummel.
Second.
Right, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. So the seven-ten agenda item has moved to July. So the next one we have for seven fifteen, since we didn't change the agenda, we actually should wait for.
Yeah, I couldn't change the agenda because I'd already sent letters out for everybody. So it was just, this was the best way to do it.
Okay, so we have a few minutes before we can start the next agenda item. I guess seeing that there's quite a big audience tonight, and I'm guessing that there's going to be quite a bit of public comment, would say that we're going to try and limit it to two minutes each when you come up. Sherri, if you could run a timer when we actually do that. And try to keep it to that two minutes, respectful of everybody's time, keep the meeting moving along. We don't wanna stand up on here and preach for half an hour each, so. Just be aware of that. All right, so it's seven fifteen, so we can move on. Fire and Ice conditional use permit. Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit in Lakeside Commercial District per Article eleven, section eleven oh nine. Applicant wishes to erect a large gathering tent to host bands and have a beer garden. Said property is legally described as lot twenty-five, Lewis and Clark Business Center, section sixteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County. Nine-one-one address is thirty-eight oh four West Eighth Street, Yankton.
All right, so Fire and Ice, the new convenience store, grocery store out there, Lakeside Commercial, they wanna be able to put up a large tent for gathering, have a beer garden, have live entertainment, bands. Just for reference, this is Deer Boulevard, if you're not sure where the location is. Highway fifty-two and Deer Boulevard, they're on the northwest corner.
So is this to be like an ongoing type permit where they can put up a tent whenever and have a beer garden? Or is this a one-time event, or?
No, they wanna do it, I don't know how regularly, but more than once. I think they're here, if he wants, he might come up.
Yep, come on up and tell us a little bit about it.
I don't think they would do it every weekend.
I'm James DeBoer, an owner of Fire and Ice.
Yep, so I guess, can you tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do?
Well, we're hoping to have, we've got, I think it's a fifty by sixty tent that we'd like to erect on the west side of the building, just west of the pad of cement there. And then be able to, you know, I mean, we have a liquor and beer license and we would like to be able to sell and have people gather outside, probably a few times a year have a band. This year, we've just got it planned for one time. But to be able to move forward and have some flexibility in what we're trying to do.
Okay.
What hours of operation are you thinking of running it?
You know, if we have a band, it would probably be till midnight on a Friday or Saturday night. And, you know, we wouldn't plan on ever probably having it during the week. And just for the beer garden, you know, I mean, that, we're not looking to be a go-to place for people to set out till two o'clock in the morning. We have no intentions of that. Does that answer your question?
How you gonna get them out?
What?
How you gonna get them out of there?
Well, you know, I guess, you know, you, you know, I mean, that, at this point, that's not our target, our audience. I mean, like I said, we're gonna have the band and, and, you know, I mean, that's, you stop serving, they'll leave.
So is this tent that you're looking to put up, or is that something you're going to leave up, kind of like all summer? Or are you gonna take it down in between events?
We haven't set it up yet right now. I would kinda hope to be able to leave it up. Like I said, we haven't set it up, so we don't know how labor-intensive it is to put up and take down. You know, I know how windy it gets, so I mean, part of me would like to have it down as much as possible. So, I mean, that would be kind of a, you know, right now, I couldn't answer that in a way that I would be absolutely certain of.
Bill, are there time requirements on the other similar?
I don't think we've had one like this since I've been here. You talk about having bands? Yeah, we haven't had any of those since I've been here.
The Hopps Farm would be the closest.
Yeah.
Because they were having bands. Was there a limit on them?
Yeah, I'm sorry, recall.
Oh, doesn't, doesn't Cottonwood, they have bands outside, don't they?
They may have been grandfathered in.
Oh.
But I know the Meridian Hopps Farm had some limits, but I don't recall what they were.
Somebody was.
Ten or eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
You could certainly set a condition for that, Don.
Yep, and for limiting when, Friday or Saturday, at a certain time. What about parking?
I believe that parking lot can handle over two hundred vehicles.
Okay, so are you planning to set up some barriers so they're not parking on the neighbor's property?
Yes, yes. I already talked to the neighbor to the north. And I told him that I would definitely make sure that we, you know, continue to work with him to ensure that nobody parked on his property.
Have you had any conversations with the residents across the road?
No, we have, we have not had anybody come in and say anything.
What about restrooms?
Say again?
Restrooms.
Right, restrooms is an issue?
We were gonna work on getting some porta-pots out there for that because we don't have, at this point in time, we do not have facilities in the building that would be able to handle that.
And lighting?
We were gonna run lighting inside the tent, and then we have lighting on the front side of the building.
Will this be a tent with walls or an open-air tent?
I believe it's open-air.
So I assume you're not gonna have a string quartet playing Vivaldi? It'd probably more like Charlie Daniels cover band type music.
Yeah.
And a little boot scoot buggy, possibly?
Some of that stuff, I'm sure.
And so it seems to me that there should be some limitations in terms of sound at the residences that are nearby, both across Highway fifty-two and on the, in the surrounding area. It also seems to me that there should be some restrictions in terms of lighting. I believe we already have a, in the Highway fifty-two corridor overlay, I believe it talks about no flashing lights. So how will you deal with that? What's your plan for limiting the noise level at surrounding residences? And what's your plan for limiting the any flashing lights that might take place?
I can help you answer some of those questions. So basically the positioning of the band. My name's Kate.
Hi, Kate.
It's stepdaughter.
I think we've met.
I'm manager there. So basically the position of how we would have, you know, set up the band so it would bounce back and forth between the storage unit and our building, so that way it's not, you know, projecting outwards. It's kinda how I thought would be the best way to, you know, limit the music or the noise or whatever projecting to the other neighbors as well.
Right, and I guess another issue that comes to mind is that intersection of Highway fifty-two and Deer Boulevard is just
Yeah.
constant traffic.
Absolutely.
And there's no light. And if we end up with a couple hundred cars in the lot and the show's over, it seems to me that there's a real potential for an issue with accidents, especially with the beer garden aspect of it.
We are offering rides as well.
That's good.
We have a driver. And there is two, there's two accesses to come in and to go out as well, so.
Right.
They wouldn't necessarily.
They could go down.
Well, technically three if they cross over, you know.
Sure.
So it's, you know, it's, yes, it can be a little, you know, clustered there, but it wouldn't necessarily need to be, you know. And we could control it as well, you know. Certain parts of the parking lot go this way, you know, block it off, so it's a one-way to go that way and that way. If need be, that we could, that would definitely something.
I guess it feels like your request is a little indefinite at this point. In terms of noise, in terms of potential for obnoxious light taking place, and in terms of potential traffic issues, in terms of people needing to use restrooms. And I don't know how you deal, frankly, the thing that I don't know how you deal with would be the noise. Normally, when people go to a beer garden in South Dakota, they like to make noise. And they should be able to do that. And I want you guys to be successful, but I don't see how you do it. And still, respect the rights of your neighbors. I just can't figure out how you do that.
We'll look at the uses close by with Stringers.
I get it, yeah.
And storage units are short-term use, people are in and out. You do have an adjacent property owner across the way, there's three houses right there. You have businesses, mostly businesses are shutting down about the time this will be picking up. So workers at those businesses will no longer be there. I agree, with some control and with some planning, this would definitely be something that could be applied to that property.
I live within about a mile of Stringers and I can hear that when they play, bands play, doesn't I? Doesn't keep me awake.
So before anybody makes a motion to approve this, I think we need to talk about restrictions before the motion is made, so we don't have to do this rescinding and amending and things. So I do think we need to consider an endpoint, either eleven PM or midnight, and consider Friday and Saturday nights only for those. I do think we need to put in there barriers for parking and no parking on the frontage road. Porta-potties are required, downcast lighting, and then a traffic control plan to minimize congestion after the events. So I think at a minimum, those need to be put on the CUP's restrictions.
Did you include sound in that?
No, I did not. And part of the reason is what Don just said, there's Stringers is right across the road. They have bands inside, I don't know if they have bands outside. They have no restriction. And I was trying to figure out if the Hopps Farm had any restrictions. I do. And I was trying to figure out if, uh, the hops farm had any restrictions. I do not remember a noise restriction there by the campground. I know there was a time. And then, of course, the Cottonwood down the road has no restrictions either. And so part of it is, on a Friday or Saturday night, eleven or twelve o'clock is pretty reasonable. That there's no noise after that time period. It is a lakeside commercial district. It is not a residential district, even though we do have some residences in there. We have chosen to make this a business district, so, um, for me, I would not, not put noise in there. I think it would be really hard to police, and, I mean, how loud?
So is this for one time, or is this for forever, as long as they own it, they get to?
I think they're asking for that, so if you wanted to consider limiting how many monthly activities they could do, or limiting to summer, or not in winter type things, I mean, those are up for discussion as well, because-
They'll make winter all work.
Well, I mean, we're not supposed to have people living in campers either all winter.
Yeah.
And we know they do.
Yeah.
As long as they used it once a year, it would continue to exist.
Correct, yep.
So does anybody from the board have any more questions for the applicants? So. Okay, thank you, guys. Um, I guess before we go into board discussion, I'll open up to any other public comment on this particular CUP.
My name is Teresa Kobel, and one of the, um, um, I'm a, I'm addressing the commission with Fire and Ice because we are residential homeowners, um, on the bluff. Sound carries up also, and we too also hear, you know, stringers playing. We've never heard the hops farm play, but, um, that is a concern of ours and, and a lot of the other neighbors along the bluff as well, so. I just would like you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Beth Keltzoulis. And we own the storage units behind Fire and Ice to the north. Um, we don't recall a conversation with Mr. DeBort, but he has been a good neighbor so far, and we have appreciated him as a neighbor. Our concern is, our biggest concern is the parking. Because if you've driven out there, you see there's no fence between our two properties, and we can see ATVs going in and out all the time between our logs that we put there to keep people out. We had a berm that's now gone because people are driving out there. And so we're concerned. It's great if he has, if you have some restrictions on the parking, that's great, but he probably would need somebody just out there with the parking. I mean, and I don't think if he keeps the frontage road open, that he will be able to have two hundred cars out there. I don't know if you've been out there to look at that, but if you have a tent and you can't go in the frontage road, there's not a lot of room, and then there might be parking on Highway fifty-two. I don't know. But we wanna be good neighbors, and we want him to be successful, and we're fine with the live band. We just don't want people urinating or throwing up on the property. We want people to get, be able to get into our property. If he puts barriers on our road, then our renters can't get in with their boats and their campers that on the weekend they would be there. So, just something to think about. Again, he's been a great neighbor, so we just want to make things work. Thank you.
Hi, Terry Clark, and I do not live near there, but it just struck my mind, I used to work for a county government elsewhere, that possibly there could be a conditional use for the tent and the facility, but, uh, they might need, uh, an event permit. I don't know if you have those kind of things here. If they're talking about occasional use, maybe that's a way to handle that, and then you can work in their traffic control. So, just a thought.
All right, is there any other public comment on this CUP? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Resume board discussion. Uh, Bill, I guess one question I had, if, uh, this tent is put up and left up for weeks or months at a time, does it require a building permit? Or, I mean, when does it become not a temporary structure if you're leaving it up all the time?
Yeah, and that's, if they were to, you know, put it up for an event and take it down, that's temporary. If they put it up and they're gonna leave it all summer, I would say that's probably requiring a building permit. Because it's permanently attached at that point. So. Hopefully, it's easy enough for them to put up and take down.
We need to take the hopefully out, Bill. We need to, they need to know exactly what they can do and what's expected of, so what?
Sure. Well, they, they have the choice. If, if they're gonna put it up and take it down, they don't need a permit. If they're gonna put it up and leave it up, they're gonna need a building permit. So they'll have to decide that before they have their first event.
Okay, good.
I guess. I agree with most of Sherry's, um, suggestions for conditions, and I think I would add to it to take the bill, take the tent up and down for each event, because I guess if you're having a tent with no sidewalls or anything like that, and it's up for long periods of time, you have the risk of it blown away in the wind, and you're right next to a major highway, so that would be an issue.
Can I have a, a comment, Chris?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think it might help to have a little more defined plan. The question about permanent structure versus a temporary structure. A tent sounds temporary, which also sounds seasonal, which will, um, answer all those questions that, that we have, and there are a lot of them.
So are you suggesting that you'd like to have the applicant come back for, with a more detailed plan, or?
Well, it, it might, it might make sense. Um, I'm not advocating that, but there are a lot of questions, and I, I think the temporary versus permanent would, would solve a lot of them. If that's their intent to, to be permanent, then that, that opens up a, a whole can of worms.
I agree with Dan. I think right now it just seems like there's a lot of unknowns. And if you allow one event and it doesn't go well, we're gonna have people back here, you know, saying, I, I want that first event to go well. I want it to go well and be successful. And I just think there needs to be a, a more planning. Come to us and say, here's our plan for parking. Here's our plan for noise. I mean, give us specifics. Because right now I feel like with the conditional u-, you know, with the, the limits on it, there's still two, we're just, we're trying to pick something, whereas if they come with a definite plan, then we can really hone in those conditions that will go with it.
And to Dan's point, um, if it is gonna be a permanent structure, you probably should have permanent fences for traffic control, so the neighbors don't have people wandering and doing unpleasant things or parking here and there, and, you know, your parking lot would be set up then for true parking, not just, oh, gosh, I'm having an event this weekend, we're gonna park places, so it, it would make it easier to narrow in.
Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see a, a, a more definite plan on the issues that have come up from the various people who have spoken, and uh, give us a better idea of exactly what it is that we're either voting for or voting against.
So I, my, my guess at it is, is that the amount of work it'll take to put up a fifty-by-sixty tent and take it down, put it up, is almost prohibitive. Would we have objections if, if they put up a steel roof with, without sides on it, with just pole sides?
Well, I would assume that that would alleviate some of the safety concern of it blown away with bad weather, but I guess a lot of the other, the other issues that were talked about, parking or bathrooms or whatever, still need to be addressed, and they're still there, same issues. Just having a permanent roof would alleviate some of the safety concerns, I guess. And it would also give us more defined idea of what's going on, if it's going to be a permanent thing there all the time, or once in a while kinda deal.
Yeah, I think that's another thing that should be defined a little bit better, is, is a, give us some idea of what you're actually planning to do, how often, what nights, what hours. I mean, tell us what you want, rather than having us guess at it. And maybe put a restriction in that doesn't help you. And if you had told us what we wanted, we might have approved what you want. So I, I, I'm like, I think I'd like to see more definition before we vote to approve or disapprove on all of these issues.
So can we table this then till the next meeting, or?
I would suggest just postpone it to the July meeting.
I entertain a motion to postpone, or if somebody wants to move forward?
I'll make a motion to postpone till July. Second.
All right, hold on, you're ready, Bill?
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. So that will be on the July meeting. Okay. So the next agenda item is the Monkfold Land and Cattle variance. Applicant is requesting a variance in agricultural district per Article five, section five fifteen, Article eighteen, section eighteen oh seven, Article nineteen, section nineteen oh seven. Applicant is requesting a variance of twenty-five feet from the front or north of the property line to build an agriculture accessory structure. Said properly, property is legally described as the north half of the northeast quarter and the north half of the northwest quarter, excluding two hundred and eighty feet of the west, three hundred and eighty feet of north, one hundred and eighty feet of the west, six, sixty acres. Um, section eight, T ninety-six north, R fifty-six west of Fifth PM, Yankee County, South Dakota. Address is forty-three, five oh three, two ninety-two Street, Minno.
Monk, Monkfold Land and Cattle, they own this parcel, this parcel, and the brothers, the family members owns this parcel. They have their cattle here, they'd like to put a calving shed right here. They're asking for a twenty-five-foot variance. The new floodplain map runs through here. So they're, they have to push it up here if they wanna put it anywhere near where their cattle are. So you're right about where my cursor is. And they're gonna have to be one foot above baseline elevation because they're that close to the floodplain.
So, I guess why not just replat that lot?
Well, I think this is owned by the business, and this is owned by a family member.
I looked on Beak, and it was both the same owner, if you click on it?
For taxes, it pro- could be. Because they could do that, but they, I, they, uh, if I remember right from the surveyor, they surveyed the house off a couple years ago. Because the family member, an individual family member owns it. No, it's Solis owner, Monkfold Land and Cattle. Yeah, I'm Ordell Monkfold, that's where I live. We took the house out, we wanted to leave the house out of the corporation. That's why the house is separated. But, yeah, the, the company owns the ground around it. It's all the same. I mean, I'm the president of the corporation, but we kept the houses, each, each of our houses separate.
So it's, the house is separate, but the corporation still owns the land that the house sits on?
No, uh, no. There's an acre, like, opted out of. The house is, is not in the corporation. Or the land that the house sits on.
So where's the current floodplain? Because-
There used to be a barn, existing barn there, and that deracial took it down, or took it off its foundation, so I tore it down, now it's under replacement.
What did you say about the, the building there? Say that again.
There used to be an old barn there.
Okay.
The deracial come through, and it took a lot of its foundation, so I had to tear it down.
Is the foundation still there?
No. It wasn't a whole hundred degree barn.
Oh, okay. But it was within, um, it was too close to the property line when it was constructed?
And I, I kinda built my corral system around the barn and tied into it, so I wanted to put the new building in the same spot.
So you're kinda replacing an old building?
Yeah. So this is the, the, ah, shoot. I don't like using this pen. This is the, the current floodplain. The new floodplain adds a little bit along this side and this side. So there, like I said, there're gonna have to be one foot above baseline elevation with the new building. And that would be a problem to perhaps, well, behind most of.
So if you're replacing the previous building, has it been too long or something that we haven't? That they can't just rebuild it?
I, I'm not sure when it was removed, but it was removed, uh, or- A year after the deracial come through. Um, when they plodded that off, it would've been a non-conformant building.
Yeah, but if you were just replacing a building that was damaged or whatever?
But if it's non-conformant use, after a year, it goes away.
So it's been more than a year?
Yeah.
Where exactly do you want to build the new building?
Right where the cursor is.
Can you point that out?
Right there. Right where the cursor is.
And this is within, it's less than fifty feet from the road?
No, from the property line.
From the property line, I see.
The property line of his own personal house.
I see. And who lives in the house?
I do. That's where I live. On that farm.
And you don't object to it?
No.
Cold winter nights, it probably makes it more commedia.
I didn't know it was gonna be an issue, I guess, when I talked to him.
Right.
He said it'd be fifty feet away.
So it's, it's, it's your house, and it would be your building.
Yeah.
And it's on your land.
Yeah.
And it just so happens that it's on a different parcel.
Yeah.
And do you own both parcels?
Yeah.
I guess maybe I'm not smart enough to figure out what the objection would be. Or who would be objecting.
It's that it's a variance.
According to the ordinance, there has to be hardship. So you have to determine if there's a hardship.
Such hardship is not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district in the same vicinity. The authorization of such variance will not be a substantial detriment to adjacent property, and the character of the district will not be changed by the grant of the variance. That one's probably okay. The granting of such variance is based upon reasons of demonstrable and exceptional hardship as distinguished from variations for purposes of convenience, profit, or caprice.
Right. That's the hard part.
So, I mean, you could say, well, you can just make your one point one-five acres bigger. The downside is that building would then be on the small lot. If you draw it bigger. And it looks like right now there's a building that's right on the property line.
Right. To me, it's a,
So.
As you suggested, they own the land, both sides. It's just a common sense thing. They're out in the country. Makes his operation probably better. You could say that, you could say that hardship would be in the wintertime going out to check on, on calving. You can say that's a hardship. This way it is, and it's close.
Because I need to replace them, yeah, so I can protect them if the weather's bad, that's, that's what I'll have to build it for.
And in your packet, you said that the water lines and everything are already there, ready to go?
Yeah, there's a water fountain.
So if you-
Electricity's there.
So if you had to build somewhere else, you would have to-
I'd have to redesign, redesign everything.
Yep, yep.
Can I redo my corral system?
Yeah, which I think is a hardship, I mean, would be a hardship.
If you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the condition of the use permit.
Before you make that, um, anybody else have any questions for applicant? All right, thank you. Um, I'm gonna open it up to public comment on this. Um, I'm gonna open it up to public comment on this variance request. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. Um, continue the board discussion, or if you would like to make a motion, I guess, added to the hardship. That it's hard to relocate the building elsewhere on the po, property due to existing structures and then also the floodplain.
The floodplain has expanded. It's taken more land away, so.
Yeah.
That's probably the basis for the hardship.
Now it moved. To approve this condition of use permit.
Second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. You can vote when you're ready unless there's anything else to add.
Barkle.
Yes.
Sorry, did somebody say something?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. Loest.
No.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. So, next one on the agenda is the plat, we already took care of. So next up on the agenda is the next era presentation. Go ahead whenever you're ready. If you'd like to state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Um, I'd like to chance to introduce myself. My name is Clay Cameron. I'm the Director of Development for Nextdoor Energy. I'm responsible for the development efforts in South Dakota, North Dakota, and a handful of projects in Minnesota. Um, I didn't get a chance to speak to you last month, but I'm, thank you for the opportunity tonight. We have a little bit of a presentation to hopefully address some of, some unanswered questions I think the board had from last month's meeting, so I'm gonna turn it over to Alan Anderson to be able to answer those in our presentation. Hopefully that works for you, so, thank you.
So, good evening. I'm Alan Claus Anderson. I am, a couple things. So first, I'm the Chair of the Energy Practice Group of the Paul Sinelli Law Firm. So we're about a thousand lawyers. You can see the red dots are where our offices are, and then we practice from an energy perspective through most of the country, focused on renewable energy projects. So a lot of experience in county processes like this. The other part, probably, probably a little more pertinent to this effort tonight is, I'm a professor at the University of Kansas School of Law, and I teach renewable energy law, which includes land use and decisions like this. So you put those two together, and this is a place I'm very used to being. So the first thing I'll do is, before we even get into the, to the specifics of the process, is a little of the foundational, uh, how land use and property rights intersect, because what, what you're doing now is quite literally one of the most critical parts of utilization of property rights and the main, maintenance of our property rights system in the US. So I'll go through that a little bit, and it really is pertinent. There we go. First, what's at stake? So just the, the nature of creating land use rules is, to some extent, again, for better, for worse, it's some taking away of a degree of a property right for a use. The second is that the government's decisions about property rights, so what you're doing, have an impact on an individual, a landowner's right to take part in the economy. We've seen that a little bit tonight. Well, you see that even more in other contexts. And, and why that's so pertinent, and Professor Alkey, who's since deceased, but he was professor at UCLA, saw this, you know, so you can read the quote, but property rights are one of the most fundamental requirements of a capitalist economic system, and one of the most misunderstood concepts. And I think that is accurate, and it continues to this day. So that's the first part is, that's why I start with this when we get into the specifics here on wind energy, is we understand that on the property rights perspective, that keeps coming in. So how, how does the United States protect pop, property rights? It does it actually twice. So the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment both state that no state or no person shall deprive a person of the three things, life, liberty, or property without due process. And it really was, if you, you can go into the, the, um, the different papers from our founding fathers and things, uh, the, and the protection of property rights was fundamental, similar to life and liberty. And there was a concern that they would be impacted, you know, unfairly. James Madison wrote in Federalist Paper Number Ten, a lot on this issue, and it was really a core issue. So it's still here today and still important for the same reasons it was at the founding. And then in South Dakota, at the founding of South Dakota, it also, in section two, Article six, the South Dakota Bill of Rights, it added a, uh, the same, same article. So foundational to the United States, foundational to South Dakota, and critical and as important as our other life, liberty, and other rights. So why do we care? And the reason why we care is because when we take away a use of a property, we're taking away an economic use. So as Professor Alkey reminded us, when we do that, we have impact. And in this case, it's a harm. It's an injury to that property owner. So when we do something, which again, can be the right thing to do, but it, it will have harm to a property owner. And when we take away economic use, we are altering the free market. So if you believe in the free market, if you believe in like Professor Alkey and the, the capitalist system, our use of property is how an individual engages in the free market, engages in capitalist system. So we want to be smart, and we want to be cautious about it. And so it's not just a pure taking, but excessive restrictions, and we can talk about, you know, more specifically, and I know you've heard a lot of that, in an ordinance is a taking because it makes it unusable. So while I won't, won't say the word taking, if you put an excessive restriction in, it has the same behavior as a, as an actual taking of the property. So for example, the two-mile setback would a hundred percent be a taking of the, of the ability for someone to use a natural resource of their property. You know, from the, from the literature, from the information, that something related on safety, we can handle. There's, you know, decades, more than twenty years in South Dakota, more than twenty years in North Dakota, more than twenty years in Kansas, Nebraska. So we have decades and decades of history, we don't have, and engineering, in order to cite and, and, and work on the restrictions and the proper citing of a wind project, one point one times from a property line, for example, you know, the appropriate sound at, at a home, all those things, we know that. When you go beyond that, particularly when you get to the point of excessive, then it gets to the point of the same taking, and I'll give, I'll give an example on this. So here's an example. So, and again, this could be any use. You've had some today, but if, let's say your ordinance on another use, in this case, I just picked one, dog training kennel business. So some of them might help people train dogs for hunting or something like that, and then obviously kennel dogs in different contexts. They want to start a facility, and they own a property they think otherwise works for that. So they, so then, another family moves in. They come in here from Oregon, they set up, they buy one acre parcel in the kind of near the property, and they don't like hunting. They don't want to see dogs, and so they will not agree to waive to it. So that we have a two-mile restriction, they, with a chance to talk, you know, to allow for waivers, and they say no, that they won't waive it. Here's what that means. So that one acre parcel that buys it in the middle of that now will have the ability to stop that neighbor from using this business and using it for that economic use for sixteen square miles. That's what a two-mile setback means, and ten thousand two hundred and forty acres. So they would actually be essentially condemning that use, so the dog training kennel business, for sixteen square miles. There could be the rest of the, whole community wants it, it has a purpose, it has economic purpose, it could bring in revenue, it could do good things. That one family or that one person could stop ten thousand two hundred and forty acres use, use of that use. It's the same thing in pick your use. So this is just one I, I picked, but it could be essentially anything. It's the same thing when we talk about wind energy. So, and, uh, real quick, then the other thing that will come up, and I'll touch on this before I get into, to the, uh, energy and the grid and things like that, property values. And I know you heard about this, I think, from Dr. Olson. This is the latest study. I know he gave a copy of this. This is kind of the latest, greatest, they did in, you know, an exhaustive study, and there's no impacts on property values. So that's kind of the rest. I'll go quickly through the others. If anyone wants a copy of any of the reports, we can certainly give them. Uh, Marus and Company, they did one recently in twenty twenty-two. That included specific South Dakota counties. And again, I'll flip through University, UC Davis, Wichita State, University of Oklahoma, and many others. And ultimately, a quote like this is what you'll kind of see. What we know, and is, and you can actually, so here's the studies, but we can also look, what's happened in South Dakota, what's happened to the neighboring states. The answer is, we've not had to impact property values, period. It just hasn't happened. Uh, you know, Nextdoor has four projects in South Dakota. They have fifteen projects in North Dakota. It hasn't happened in those counties, nor any, nor any of the other counties.
Just one thing on that. I guess I didn't have a chance to review any of the other studies except for that first one at the top, since that was provided last time. When I was reading through that, it was basically a compilation of other studies in that it, it noted that one of the restrictions on that particular study is that, in the US, they only studied about twelve hundred, fifteen hundred different transactions, and the number of, uh, transactions they studied in Europe was over a hundred and fifty thousand. But basically, the limitation that they noted was that they didn't have a ton of data for the US. And don't you think that when you're talking about property rights and all this, that, that the US has a different view on property lights, property rates than Europe does? As far as you're trying to claim that these studies support that, there's no effect on property values. But studies that have been cited, it's saying that we didn't study property values that extensively in the US. What's that?
So you've looked at that, because the, the Lawrence Berkeley Lab is, is, that's a follow-up to their previous study. So there's an older study. This is the follow-up to that. And it actually had an enormous amount of, um, data that it looked at. But it also, it's conform, it confirms and conforms with all the studies, so that, you know, any quality studies that are out there, and the decades. So again, if we were talking about this twenty years ago, and where we didn't have all of the studies, and actually, in this case, the real world examples, it, it, it does not happen in any of the states. It hasn't happened in South Dakota where we have projects. It hasn't happened in North Dakota where we've had projects. It hasn't happened in Kansas where they have forty-five projects. So when you put all of those together, now we don't have to guess. It's pretty overwhelming that, that we do have the data. And actually, the Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, again, those are pretty, those are pretty extensive studies. But you have to be careful also sometimes, and I don't know the European ones well, because I don't, I don't work in Europe, uh, they have different citing conditions too. So you have to kind of make sure that that's kind of considered part of it. A lot, a lot of European projects will have a little closer proximity. But, but yeah, though, I think it's a good question, it's a fair one. The good news here on this is we, we have a lot of data, and we have a lot of studies and a lot of real examples.
Alan, in one of my previous lives, I was a real estate broker in Colorado, and I was an agent in Nebraska, South Dakota, and Iowa. And I found out that there are three things that are very, very important to the value of a piece of real estate, and all three of them are location. Now, here in Yankton, there are bluffs up above the river and the lake, and the rich people live on the bluff. And I live down below. And the reason for that is, because all things being equal, if there are two properties, all characteristics equal, if one of them has an excellent view, and the other one has an eyesore, buyer will buy the one with the excellent view. That is a simple fact.
Okay.
You don't need a study to confirm it. It happens every day. Um, my view is Highway fifty-two and a cornfield. Some other people's view is a beautiful sunset over the river and the lake, and their properties are worth a lot more.
Well, so the, the good news, again, on this, and this is, you've heard the exact same thing. What they did is to study on this, is they actually looked at that, because that would be something I think you could come to that conclusion without doing the, the data. What they found is that, like anything, some people don't want to have a single level home. Someone have a double. There's different reasons why people would want or not want a particular parcel. In places, and obviously, when we're talking about, um, in this case, like that Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, projects in counties under two hundred and fifty thousand, the reason people bought those properties, that wind project didn't have an impact on the property values. So the, the adequacy of the people wanting to buy those properties was not impacted. In fact, what's interesting on some of these studies, you look at Wichita State, you look at, um, University of, uh, Oklahoma, in both those, uh, studies, actually, neighboring properties actually had a slight increase. Now, they didn't make a cause and effect to it, but it's an interesting fact to that. But the other ones do show it doesn't. So it's, it's understandable to kind of have a first blush thought on that. Fortunately, again, with the decades of actual projects that didn't have that negative impact, and the studies that conform, and confirm that, we just, fortunately, we don't have to guess that. Okay, so then, that's kind of the, the first part. I think you foundationally think about what we're doing and what it does, because again, it's often easy to look, and I think we're talking about an energy company. I think one thing you think about when we think about those parcels, the people who actually make a CUP application to a county are the landowners. The company does it on their behalf, but it's the landowners that you have in your community that want to participate in the project. They're the ones coming to you and saying, I would like to use my property in this way, for whatever reason. You know, often, it has enormous benefits on keeping people's farms, keeping people's ranches, all those things. But that's who's coming to you. The other thing is, the idea, we talk about wind energy as if it's a completely different beast. Wind energy is energy. In South Dakota, there is no requirements. There's nothing requiring or, or demanding that your utilities or the, anything through the grid or the Southwest Power Pool, uh, source renewable energy, do anything in relation to either carbon emissions or anything of the sort. There's nothing. The Southwest Power Pool, I know this was said to those you, that were on the, uh, Wind Task Force, that somehow the Southwest Power Pool is required to favor renewables and take it first. That is a hundred percent false, not true at all. There is no requirement. So back to our property rights, when we talk about wind energy, we're talking about energy. And we should think about it as energy. This isn't left, right, it's not green, red, it's not anything. It is energy. So we'll talk about how it fits within our grid, in addition to be an economic opportunity for the county, but that, that's kind of really important to remember. So the first thing, and I know you had, at least Wind Task Force had someone from the, the local co-op talk about this, then the United States is generally broken into these three things. And this is kind of important to think about. We have the Western Interconnect, and that's the part there in kind of the lilac color. We have the Eastern Interconnect, which South Dakota is part of, and then ERCOT, which is just Texas, or part of Texas, and most of Texas. The reality is that in these three interconnects, they generally, you know, within some limitations, obviously, of transmission, is you can get power throughout each of the interconnect, but very little between the interconnects. So little can go from the Eastern to Western, and Western to Eastern, and nobody gets to go into ERCOT. And so there's a long story there. But the other two have very limited seams of which to transmit power, but the rest of it is, is an interconnection to that, what that does for us, and I'll get more specifically into the Southwest Power Pool, that allows for two things. And when we're doing new energy generation, and when we're doing transmission, we're doing it for two, one of two reasons, reliability, or for cost, so of market efficiency. That's what that, that right there allows us to do both of those things, redundancy and potential for reliability, and the ability to get low-cost power where it's needed, so we help on our market. Specifically then, I got that a lot, they each break into different marketplaces. So the mustard colors, the part here, we're in the, um, Southwest Power Pool, and it's close to the MISO. So those two, what they do is they create a power market. So your utilities, in the case here, we have a, we have a co-op that buys, has a generation, you know, uh, co-op that supplies it. But in, what their job is to do is, is two things, is to create market efficiency and to make sure that the adequate energy or electricity generation is available. They don't have any, there's, again, there's no requirement for renewables, there's no requirement for any kind of related carbon reduction or anything. It's about managing the grid in a good way. What's good about this is that by having a larger area, we're able to do that. So, for example, the, the co-op that's here sources, it's already at twenty percent wind. We're also, it's not new for this area. Twenty percent of the wind because of their elect, their co-op, the generation co-op that supplies them, is able to do that. And when we connect to this larger area, uh, it, it's able to do this. And I'll get into specifics, although there's some other benefits when we get into some of the weather issues we had. So the, the fun, the first part is, because some people will come and say, hey, we have this coal, we have the natural gas, therefore, we don't, we don't want any of the wind energy. I'll show you how this works, because they work together. They're not in, in conflict, they work together. Because if a, if any electricity is created, it has to be used, or it creates real problems to the grid. So we can't produce more than we need, or it can really create some instability. So baseload, we have, well, so we have three sources of generation, baseload generation, and that's kind of generally on. We don't kind of ramp that up and down. Then the other two fill what we need to meet the demand, and that's intermittent generation and dispatchable generation. Uh, dispatchable is that which we can turn on and off a little easier. And intermittent is available under the right conditions, so that's wind and solar. And they all fit into the grid. So sometimes we create this contest amongst the, the different sources. We really shouldn't do that. We should see, and I'll show you the chart here, how they work together to give us stability, reliability, and good market efficiency. So this is just a day I picked when I put this together, May twenty-fifth. You can pick any day. It'll have a slightly different curve. But if you look where the color stops, so we go into the white, But if you look where the color stops, so we go into the white, that shows that the top of the color is the demand for that day. So you can see it changes, and this is kind of very typical curve, and you can have greater spikes on hotter days, greater spikes on colder days. But we go down and we go back up and we go down. So base load can't fill the whole thing because we need to keep it operating. We can't have it near the top, because then it may be forced to generate or go up and down in a way that's harmful to it. So it can't fill the void. It has to be, it's a good part, it's an important part of our overall generation, but we fill it then with really the two blue. In this case, and we're the Southwest Power Pool, we fill it with generally wind and natural gas. So as I'll show in the slides related to cost, if your local utilities think the dispatchable natural gas is the best thing for them, they can run it all day. They can run their generation all day long, they don't have to take any wind energy. However, wind energy is the lowest-cost generation. So the utilities go out to the marketplace generally to go to get the lowest cost, that's wind energy. So when it's available, it's great for ratepayers, it's great for utilities, they go get it. But that, to fill in the other part of it, they have natural gas to fill that. So they work together, the peaker plants and the dispatchable generation with the intermittent. So they work in unison, not in conflict, and that's kind of the important point, which I'll add to how our, how our Southwest Power Pool works with this, because they're different sources. And kind of, this illustrates it. Accredited capacity is the Southwest Power Pool goes to all the sources of generation and for everything, coal, natural gas, nuclear, wind, hydro, everything. And the owner of that facility makes commitment. We will be, our source, our generation will be worth, you know, will be available X all the time, and they actually commit to those different types of things. And then with the intermittent wind and solar, and there's not enough solar yet to really even have that impact as of yet, they have, they give an accredited capacity that's, that is appropriate with the amount of wind that will always be available, because we can source it over that larger area. So it's a lower number. So it's not that we have to be concerned when it's having a better wind day or lower wind day. If it's a better wind day, great, we just get more low-cost energy. If it's lower, we know how to balance this for the other sources. So that's how we mix it. What's interesting is, it used to be our highest peak day was the summer, and so every generation, and then you have to have extra, you have to have overcapacity, you have capacity to meet that day that's once every twenty years, that used to be the summer. And so that's when they would have to say, meet that peak. Now we have the same thing happen in the winter. The challenge we're having is, we actually are having greater demand, so that's just generally, you know, we're having more demand for all sorts of reasons. When we have these brutal winter storms where it gets really cold, coal and natural gas have a difficult performing. You know, if you go buy a coal plant, it is not that new of how we, how we fuel a coal plant, it is a stack of coal and it freezes up. And then when it goes in cold, it doesn't burn as hot. So they lose their capacity. Natural gas has problems with the actual wells and some of the pipelines and different things that getting natural gas facilities. So what they found on those plants, they weren't actually meeting what they said over a five-year period of time, but when we got to the most challenging times, they actually had struggled more. Whereas wind overdid, overdid over a five-year period and met it during the coldest time. Of course, nuclear did its thing as it was expected. But the point here is making, they balance all this, and they're going through a process right now to do performance-based accreditation, they're going to look at these. But what's important also with energy is it is critical infrastructure. Everything we do, there's not a thing we do that doesn't rely on energy. The greatest engineers that look at these things manage this. And when to step in and fool around with our different sources that are outside of good engineering is dangerous. And so we'd really have to be thoughtful and careful. So I know you had someone come in and tell you their thoughts on how it works, that's dangerous when we're talking about critical infrastructure, because we have really good engineers that manage the grid. So as to the cost, and again, it's the lowest cost, and I can tell you that before even showing the slides, which I will, we know that because it's, there is no other obligation. If it ends up being the highest cost, your utilities will go to the wholesale market and not touch it. If it is the lowest cost, which it is, that's why they want it. So, here's the chart. So this is the most recent version of Lazard who studies this. And this is the unsubsidized analysis. So if we took out, because I know this comes up every so often, if you take out all the subsidies of all our different sources of generation, and it has to be noted, we talked about wind and solars, you know, the production tax credit, the investment tax credit, the reason we get, it gets so much attention is it sunsets every so often. The subsidies for the other sources have never sunset. The biggest one, the intangible drilling cost, which is an immediate write-off of, you know, somewhere between upwards of eighty-five percent or more on an oil or gas well, and I invest in those, because they're great, they're an immediate write-off on your tax return. That has not sunset since nineteen thirteen, when it went on the books. So we're talking over a hundred and, you know, now eleven years, it just, so we don't talk about it, and so we forget that that subsidy exists, but it does. So all of our sources of electricity and power have subsidies. This is the chart that if we take them out. So if you look at solar utility scale, twenty-four dollars, wind onshore, twenty-four dollars, and of course, it has a range. And I'll show you why the range is there, because if you do a project in a lower resource area, it's going to be more expensive. You do it a higher resource area, it's less expensive. We are in a high resource area, so I'll show you why that's so good for that. I'll show you another chart on this, but if you look at the bottom on conventional sources, you see the kind of the gold diamond there. That's then in comparing the cost of continuing to operate those sources of energy. So now this isn't even a new generation, this is if we do a new wind project and we can get it at twenty-four dollars unsubsidized. So that's, question will come up, would you do it without the tax subsidy? That's the number, it's twenty-four dollars, two something. Currently operating a coal plant, fifty-two dollars. So would we do it? Yes, of course. And when I say we, would the utilities want it? Because it's not whether we want to build a project, does the market dictate that this is a good source of energy? So in that case, this is your answer, of course, it's twice as much, your utilities can't afford to charge you utility prices that are twice as much. So that's why we're starting to phase out coal, but only when we can meet the generation needs. As much as anyone may come and say, close coal, you know, whatever they may say, our engineers aren't going to allow that to happen, because they have to have the generation to meet our needs, which is growing. So that's our challenge on kind of getting more low cost, is we need more low cost, but we need more of all energy just generally. When I say it's, you know, Midwest and the Southwest Power Pool, that's the very, kind of the brown and, you know, kind of army green, you'll see that, well, really the brown, that's the Midwest. You know, Southwest Power Pool region, it is the wind belt, and it has the lowest cost energy of the other areas. So you'll see other, you know, bubbles that pop up there higher, you know, California ISO is the very top one, they have some more expensive projects, so they just do. That's not where we are, we're down on the lowest cost. So when we show those pricing, that's why it's so great for ratepayers and people in this area to have energy sources that are low cost. Here's another chart, this kind of will show you both unsubsidized, I mean, we take out that there is no subsidies, along with if it was subsidized, which can get extremely low pricing on wind compared to continuing to operate conventional generation. So coal, again, that, you know, thirty-seven to forty-seven, nuclear, and you can see the gas combined cycle. So this just kind of shows you again, that even if you take out the subsidy, adding new wind generation at that low price is incredibly beneficial to ratepayers, great for the grid because of, you know, we can balance that and we need more generation, period.
Can I stop you a little bit? So when you're talking about these prices, is that the price that, that say, those wind project would be selling it to the wholesaler at, or to the power company?
Yeah, the power, so that would be the PPA price. So those get reported to some of the places, so your co-op, so I think the co-op that supplies here, they would enter into a power purchase agreement with a wind project, that's the price for that PPA. So they lock in that price for the utility, excuse me, for the wind project, and so they get it at that low price.
And then, so basically, the co-op or whatever, they don't own the wind farm, they're just purchasing wholesale energy?
For the most part, some of the utility, yeah, for the most part, some utilities have owned a few projects, it's, they generally find it is better to have the experts operate it, just because it, you know, it's, it can be, it takes expertise out that they may not have. And so most of the time for wind projects, it is, that's the all-in price to utility, and so they get it at twenty-four dollars a megawatt hour. They deliver the megawatt, they pay the twenty-four dollars, and it's owned by the independent power company. And then, they just pay for the price. So if the project doesn't work, that's on the company. So it's a risk-free PPA with the utility.
And then, generally, who owns the type of plants that can make up for the intermittent solar or wind? Do the power companies themselves own like a natural gas plant that can fluctuate up and down to match this?
So the base load will generally be owned by the, in this case, co-op, they'll generally own that, or own part of it, a lot of times they'll be co-owned. When you get to then the dispatchable generation, so that, that they can turn on and off, that will be a combination. It'll be often owned by the co-op or the utility, also with independent power that does that. You know, a lot, a lot of the companies that do wind and solar also own independent natural gas generation, peaker plants or dispatchable generation. So that'll be a combo, owned by the utility or co-op, and also by independent companies.
So I guess where I'm going with this, do you have a breakdown of how this plays into or affects actual rates for electricity users? Because, say, like the co-op or the power provider, they're, they're going to have to either have contract or own dispatchable energy to make up for this. So when you have two things doing the same job, just in case one's not working, then that costs more money than just having one that can do the whole job by itself. So do you know what that does to actual electric rates?
Yeah, your kind of, your preview will come in traction, I'll show you a little bit of what it does to pricing. But the answer is, the utility, if it thinks it's the lowest cost to run their own generation, they can do that. They're not required to enter into any of these, they're not required to go to the wholesale market. Because the other part is there'll be wind energy available on the wholesale market. When you heard your co-op, what they said is, they're getting the benefit of that, that's really helping them on pricing. But the dispatchable generation, it is still, it's so much more expensive that if the, if the others there, they'd rather use it. It's kind of the example I give is, if you have two cars, one costs you a dollar a mile to drive, and the other costs you ten cents to drive, you're going to drive the ten-cent car, even if you own this other one. You've heard, most of the sunk costs, there's a little, there's operational cost, but you don't run something that's more expensive when something so much less is available. So the answer now also is, we need all the generations in general because of our increased demand. So no one's going to get rid of anything, but if they could get to the point where they have high-cost generation that would be dispatchable or otherwise, and they have enough of the other, they will close, just economically, the higher cost. But having both of them is not a problem to the utilities. They can run their own if that's the best cost for them. They don't, they don't enter, they don't end up in a situation with extra cost.
Well, I guess going to your analogy, though, basically, they're forced to have the dispatchable or that higher-priced car regardless, if yours is available, yeah, the wind or the ten-cent car you're talking about is available, so yeah, I'll use it when I can, but I still have to have the other one just in case, no matter what, and I don't have a choice on that. So that, yes, you would use the cheaper one possible, but just because you can doesn't mean it's always going to be cheaper, so that leads into a broader economic question of whether it's actually going to drive your rates down or not.
So the answer is, it will, there's nothing that will keep your rates from going up more or going down. Whether they go down is another question, that's, there's a lot of factors going into that. But there's no question on that, the economics of having more wind energy in the grid and more solar energy in the grid does that. Because we do accredit a, accredit a capacity, and renewables do get credited capacity for that. So if they enter in, if they have enough wind energy that they can accredit, credit, then they don't need, they actually can close some of the most expensive. What we have are some old and inefficient plants, we're not talking about the most, like the best and newest natural gas plants, but they have some, they would love to if they have enough generation. So we have to get to the right credited capacity, and then they will, there probably will be some that close. But from a cost perspective, there's just no question, because if it was cheaper for them to run just the dispatchable, they can do that. It's not. That's, so it's the free market kind of working, because if I'm the co-op and I think that's the case, so, you know, kind of the situation you're laying out, then just do that. Then you'll win, you'll win the race on the pricing. The answer, it's such a big difference, it's not. The incremental cost of having the backup, you know, the generation that's there that they don't have to run at capacity, is still far better economically to get the wind energy and have that available, even though there would be some cost to that, it's no question, it's better economically. If it wasn't, they don't have to do it, and they wouldn't do it. In fact, they'd be challenged by the Public Service Commissions and everything, everyone else who has a chance, you know, they're participants, they wouldn't do it, because they don't have to. There's no requirement that they do it. So they don't have to enter into a wind PPA, they don't have to go to the wholesale market and get it, they go get energy. So when you get to the part I was kind of mentioning...
Alan, if you could go back to the slide where you show the variations, looks like hills.
This one?
No, the, way back.
Oh, the.
All right, that one.
Mm-hmm.
There are people who talk about arriving or achieving, arriving at or achieving zero emissions. Is that realistic?
It would take, so the scenario where they do it, I'll explain, I'll tell you how they, you know, those who paint a picture, they have no time soon, no time soon. What they'd have to do, so you take this chart here, one is we'd have to add enough natural gas, and natural gas would have to have some kind of carbon, you know, sequestration to go with it, you'd add more wind and solar, and so it's no time soon to get to that. But there, there's a scenario that you, can we engineer it? There's people that can engineer it, it's just that it's not, not anytime soon.
That leads me to a question, it might seem off-topic, but it isn't. Both MIT and Lawrence Livermore Lab in California have proven the concept, at least, and in fact, have achieved it in practice, nuclear fusion. They've used different methods to achieve the same goal. How far away are we? It seems to me that at this point, since the concept has been proven in practice, two different places using two different methods, that we're now faced with an engineering problem, which is to build out a practical use of it.
Yeah.
How far away are we?
So, which, I'll even go a little further, it's those two institutions, and there's other private groups that are really looking at that as well. It's real smart people. So it's, it's not just, it's not just kind of a pie in the sky, there's actually a hope, you know, that that might be. When we're talking something like that, though, and getting it out and deploying it, we're talking decades, we're talking decades and decades, and that they, by even their own, the ones who are trying to be the most aggressive and kind of maybe even have some private equity behind it, they're admitting to decades. So it's not to the proven from two parts, it's the, can we get it into an operational, functional, you know, that we could actually build it? And then we get it, can we get it in a way that's remotely cost-effective as well? Those are, and then we of course know how to site it, build it, there's, you know, things that we can do repetitively, we can do very well on a low cost, things that we do, like in fact, I'll show you an example, we, oops, my light. So when we look at, if you look here on the price of a new coal, to build a new coal, a new nuclear, they put a dotted line around that, because we really don't know what it'll cost to build those, because we don't build those. And so it would be an unknown what it would really cost, similar here. So we're talking at best, which again, I think there's real hope for that, and I think there's smart people that are looking at, beyond even just the labs who are great and MIT. We're talking, we can't wait for that, or we'll all have blackouts all the time and high-cost energy. So I think it's a, it is a, you can be real hopeful for it, but it's not soon.
So Mike, the reason I'm asking these questions is that, is that there are a lot of very, very well-intentioned people who think of themselves as, correctly, as environmentalists. And it appears to me that there's a false hope that's been created among that group of very sincere people, very well-intentioned people, that we might be within some realistic timeframe of achieving zero emissions. And going back to your hill chart again, I don't know what the correct name for that would be, but...
The demand curve, yeah.
Yeah.
In the mix, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
We must have base load, no matter what. It has to be there. And at this time, it is natural gas, preferably, and as a, and coal, and nuclear. Those three things make up the base load.
Mm-hmm.
And for the audience to know, the waste product from nuclear fusion is helium and water. It does not have the danger associated with it that our conventional nuclear plants have. So that's the future. But as Alan pointed out, it's a long way off. And so, to the people listening who want to achieve zero emissions, and they want that for the best of reasons, it's not going to happen, not in my lifetime. And it may not happen in the lifetime of people who are in their thirties and forties. And it may not happen in the lifetime of people who are in their 30s and 40s. And so, that should not be a reason, that should not be a reason why you are in favor of wind. We're not opposing wind. But we have to be realistic and understand that we're not going to get to zero emissions, or anywhere close to it, anytime soon. Would I be correct in that statement?
Yeah. So, what I'd say is, it's, it's interesting, this is the challenge when you work in this area. People who either, you know, don't understand it, but say we should not do certain things, or people who don't understand, say we shouldn't do the other thing. So, we have the same problem. Some will say, we, we need to get rid of coal immediately, we need to get, you know, do these different things. We have to absolutely work with the engineers to know what's appropriate, to make sure the lights come on and we don't, you know, have those problems, because people die, literally.
I wish, I really and truly wish that you had a national platform to say that very thing.
Yeah.
Because we have to be realistic about this. Our economy absolutely relies on reliable, consistent electrical power. We've arrived at a place where we can't live without it. And so, the people who are out there, who are wanting to shut down coal plants, and shut down natural gas plants, and who believe fervently that wind and solar are going to be able to meet the needs of our economy, they're simply wrong. They're well-intentioned, they're good people, but they're wrong. And that message needs to get out.
Yeah, but I'll also say, so yeah, I mean, we have to, we absolutely, when we're thinking about how we mess around, again, this is critical infrastructure, it's complex, and it requires, you know, it's, it's an engineering task. The same, there's, on the flip side of that, y'all, people say, oh, we shouldn't do wind because it's intermittent. Those people are equally or more wrong on that.
And we're not saying that.
No, no, I'm not saying you. I, I'm talking to the, the royal we, you know, that, there will be, people out there say, don't do this because it's intermittent. How do you tell me you don't understand how the grid works? Tell me we shouldn't do intermittent generation. Because if you add wind energy, so if you think about it, in the interim, and that, by the way, I have a great chart I can send you from Bloomberg, Bloomberg New Energy Finance looks at where would we go, how are we transitioning, simply based on economics, and where do those projections go? So, pretty good financial institution that's looking at it that way. They can put together, here's what it would look like if we tried to get to net zero, and how long that would take. So, they do, they look at those two scenarios. But if it's purely economic, we still add a ton of wind, and the thing we all ought to be excited about is adding solar, adding battery storage, adding more transmission, those kind of things to make the grid even work better with economics. But adding more wind is incredibly beneficial to this mix, similarly to being cautious about saying we should eliminate something. If people don't understand how the grid works, they'll say those, on both extremes. So, if the, and if, please, I, I tell my class, yeah, interrupt, poke, prod, and they do. Difference is, I usually get asked the questions, because we do Socratic method, I don't get to do that here, but. So, here, and here's the way, when we talk about, so this is to, to the question, this was, I couldn't believe you were helping set up this question right here. Here's how the pricing stack works on wholesale generation. If a utility and the, to meet the needs of the grid, they, they'll add the first, you know, they'll go out to the, and say, we need more power. And people who have different sources of generation offer it up to the grid. So, you get the first, and it could be, you know, this is just an example stack of different types of generation. And in this curve, this demand curve, we had to go all the way out to get the most expensive power to do it. The difference you have to understand, when we get, whatever the highest price, everyone gets that price. So, that's how they do the pricing in the wholesale market. So, when we add new, lower-cost generation, we push the stack out. So, that stuff, so this is the point earlier, the stuff that we don't use is the most expensive. I mean, we're talking just, it's just so much more than the low cost, that's the difference. We're having that available for needs, if we have that, you know, negative 20 day or the 105 day, having it available until we don't, it's there, and it gets paid for it. That, that energy gets paid at a much higher price. But for the ratepayers, they, we, if we add in new, low-cost energy, we move the whole stack out and rarely then have to go get the most expensive. Eventually, to the point, we can shut it down. We can't get to down to the shutdown, and we're talking, again, massive difference on price to the market, that's to the livelihood of your, you know, your citizens, your residents, your companies, everything. This is critical to being competitive as, to your, to your people who live here and to your companies. So, if South Dakota does things to harm its energy pricing, you're hurting your own people. If you do things, whereas your, your states around you, North Dakota's done, you know, a lot of projects, of course, Nebraska's doing more, Kansas has done a ton, that's, they're, those projects are happening, they're getting the benefit of, to a large extent of this lower-cost energy. But that's, that's kind of the story there on the pricing. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions there. Hopefully, if I missed anything, that people had questions previously, happy to talk about Any more questions from the board?
So, would this project be going on? I mean, you've been doing this, how many firms have been through Yankton County, Turner County? You're certainly not the first.
No, I think this project was acquired from a previous developer.
Right, so this is the third or fourth name?
It was Orion.
Yeah, I think this is the second, is my understanding.
So, if there were no tax credits, would you have come?
Yeah, that's, so, so if you're taking.
So, why did you, why did you wait so long?
Well, there's, so there's four components for a project, so all of them have to come into place. The first is, you have to have the resource. So, obviously, South Dakota and that, that location has the resource. It has to have interconnection. So, you have to go through a process to make sure that the interconnection is studied, then they, that you can inject in the grid. One of the, and I think you heard this from, those on the wind task force from the co-op, they do, it's years, it can be upwards of seven years of studying the interconnection, because when a wind project or anything interconnects to the grid, they do a study through the entirety of the grid. And the developer of the new source of energy has to pay for all the upgrades. So, that's expensive, and it's a long process, they, they charge you for that. So, that can take five, seven years to do that. So, you kind of have interconnection along with a reasonable price on the interconnection. You then have to have willing landowners. So, you have to go out, you know, there is no eminent domain, this is all private property. So, it's people who say, I want to use my property in this way. So, it's all up to them. If people want to say no, they can say no. So, you have to get that third component. And then eventually, you have to have an off-taker, someone has to say, I want to buy that power. So, the timing is not about, the tax credit just is, is not related to that at all, it's about getting those four components into place.
So, we can tell our, our Washington legislators to revoke all those?
If you want. You know, what's interesting about that, here's why, I can tell you where, other Republican governors in different places that I've had this conversation with, if you look at where the projects go, so just, so you take, it's a federal tax credit, so you're paying all the residents of South Dakota and Yankton County, you pay some portion, obviously, into the, into your federal taxes. And you're going to pay that regardless. If we do this project, we don't do this project, you're paying your federal taxes. By doing a, a wind project, you're bringing some of those back as part of this project. So, like, I can tell you, the Governor Brownback in Kansas understood that and said, this is, he was a supporter, said, let's do more projects in Kansas. I'd love to take New York's tax dollars, I'd love to take California's tax dollars, I'd love to take Texas's tax dollars, and we'll use this here. But keep in mind, if you say, when we talk about the taxes, and oil and gas has, again, I showed you the price if we took all the subsidies out. If, if you, again, the industry's been supportive, you take them all out, great. That's, that's not been a problem. But it's, but if you're saying, I'm going to take one away from one source, and I'm going to put people on, on equal footing, that doesn't make sense. But if you take them all away, wind and solar do even better.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah, so in the meantime, so that's a conversation with the federal legislators, as you sit, but as you sit here today, the project may go to, could go to another county, could go to, you know, North Dakota, can go to, I mean, Kansas, it can go wherever, it can go within the Southwest Power Pool to some extent. So, as we sit here on the project now, and again, remembering that it's the private property owners who want to use their land in this way, they don't get a say on what's happening with federal tax credit. But they're saying this could, and if you look at the studies, University of Michigan did a phenomenal study, so what happens when a, a county hosts a wind project? People invest more in their farms and ranches, they plan for succession planning, because now they have a staple, another stable source of income. And they, it has all those benefits that then accrue to the county because of that repeating itself within the county. So, the people who are here would be hurt if we stopped it just because we're upset with something that happens in, in Washington. Because you can be upset at Washington for a lot of things.
So, when you're talking about taking out subsidies for all the different forms of generation, are the other forms of generation receiving a tax credit, or are they receiving just a tax deduction?
So, I am not a tax lawyer, so I got to be real careful with kind of going into that, because they have, they all have different sources. So, for example, some have a tax credit, some have a tax deduction. And I, I gotta be careful of going too far into my, in my tax, so they have different, some will have different kinds. And some have increased depreciation, kind of accelerated depreciation, so there's also, there's a myriad of. When you look at, oil and gas has kind of all the above, generally.
Yeah.
But a lot of those are deductions, too.
Yeah, because a deduction or accelerated depreciation is just a deduction.
Right.
You're writing off the cost of doing something much like a business expense. A lot of people here are familiar with that, with their own farms. When you're talking about tax credit, that's basically the government handing you money back, and.
It, it, it works the same way.
And it can be in excess of what you paid. Where a deduction.
No, they're not making, no, no, they're not, on a tax credit, so on the production tax credit, it's actually just, it, it performs the same as a deduction, it's, it's an offset of passive income. It's not, there's no, they don't, government doesn't make a payment. So, from a tax revenue perspective, they act the same. A tax deduction is, is coming either off the bottom line or, you know, what have you. But the product, but the production tax credit, for example, is a deduction, as opposed to, they're not, the government does not hand out any, any money for that.
Oh, it's a tax credit, it offsets the actual tax that you pay, it's not a deduction, it's not the same thing.
It's offsetting passive income. The production tax credit is an offset to passive income.
Yeah, but it's the mechanism, how it offsets and how much it offsets. A credit has a far larger effect than a deduction.
Go back to your levelized cost of energy.
Yeah, that, that.
Regardless of how the tax works, there's a levelized cost.
Yeah, so if you take them out, this, this is the impact to that. So, so from, from an impact perspective, and again, I am not a tax lawyer, but the, one is offsetting passive income, one is, is a deduction to income. I, I don't, I think you're making a, an assessment as to the impact that's not, does not exist. They have the same impact, they're not, it's not a cash grant, it's not a delivery of cash from the government, it is a reduction on, on tax, which is what they have as well on the other sources. But there it is, there's the number, you see, kind of take a look at, if we take them out, this is it. And again, that's, you know, when you think about it from a county perspective, when you think about tax, again, great for discussion and happy to have it. It was just, let's see, under the Trump admin, let's see, it started with Senator Grassley, it's gone on since then, been extended, it was extended under the Trump administration. It was recently not, it was added years, so it was still, it was still good during the Biden administration, but they added more years to it. What we found is, it, it benefits both Republican and Democrats, which is the one thing we seem to be able to agree on. But again, if you take them all out, wind and solar do even better. So, that has the impact of what you're saying. It's just, it's just not that different, they're both an offset, one's off passive income, one's off just income.
So, here's a, just a kind of a common sense question. I think I know the answer, but I'll let you answer. When you have all of eastern Colorado, eastern Wyoming, and eastern Montana available to you, why would you put your wind farm in a relatively heavily populated area, rather than put them there? And, and I believe the reason is because there's just, it's so expensive to build transmission lines.
It, it's multiple. So, the first part is, is an example of the, the western and eastern interconnects. So, you look at where Colorado and, or Wyoming, or, you know, other, Montana, they are on the, the easternmost outpost of the western interconnect.
Right.
So, they're far away from energy load. So, you would have enormous transmission lines to get the energy to someplace, which just raises the cost of energy. So, generally speaking, that's one of the factors, you have to have transmission and interconnection that is, that doesn't, you know, explode the, the overall price of energy. So, if you look where they're located, they can't get it to the east, so they couldn't move it that direction, so to go west is a pretty large undertaking.
To be clear, here's your, sorry, Chris Olson. Some of the biggest projects that I'm working on are exactly where you're talking about right now. Wyoming's got a 1.2 gigawatt wind farm coming in one of the areas there. I worked on two projects in eastern Colorado, almost at the Nebraska border, right on the Nebraska border, that are 700 megawatt, 900 megawatt projects. They're going everywhere. So, it's, it's not just, you know, why do you hear, and then when you say a relatively populated area, again, I think we talked last time, if you go into New York State, there are 1,000 homes within a mile of a turbine in these projects.
That's New York.
Well, but you're, as you're saying, the populated, like, you've got areas in Colorado where they're going where they're heavily populated. If you go to Colorado Springs, if you go on the plateau of Colorado Springs, there is a next era project there. So, it's not somehow we're picking on the Yankton, Turner County area of South Dakota. Again, you have 20 projects up in the, on the state right now, in the areas that are similarly populated to northern Yankton County as well as southern Turner.
Right.
So, I, I don't think there's, you know, there, the projects are going everywhere. So, it's, it's.
Right.
They're going there, as well as coming to South Dakota, Southwest Power Pool, the western states, all of it. So, it's, you, you're no different than anywhere else, I guess.
You know, this is, this is the country that created the Manhattan Project in World War II, and in a period of a few years, developed a nuclear weapon that won the war. That's this country. Now, we're sitting here looking at that map as if the difference between the western grid and the power pool that we're located in was the Berlin Wall. It isn't.
Yep.
Now, there's a reason, there's a reason why that line is there, and it is simply because people haven't taken the, taken it in mind to regulate the cyclical nature of electricity. They just can't get it across, they haven't done it. They haven't tried. If we put our minds to it, that line could disappear in less than three years.
It would take, I think it would take a little longer than that, but that is actually one of the points of emphasis, is to create more seams between those.
Right, it's the, it's the regulation of the cycles of the electricity.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, and it's fascinating, we have, it's kind of, and I agree with you, it's, it's kind of unfortunate that we can't get the coordination to make that work when we get, we can, again, send someone to the moon, all those different things. You also, you run into, actually, it's just different regulatory control, too. So, each state controls its own, each, you know, so you, you run into some states that don't want to cooperate, and so you end up having a tough time. Interregional or, and multi-state energy projects are brutally difficult because of that, because each state gets to do its own. So, to your point, to kind of even have those seams and transmission lines, Fed, the FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, has a lot less authority over that than one would expect.
Right. So, basically, this is just, it's a, an administrative problem that hasn't been overcome.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a cost issue to it, it will, it's a, it's a engineering and a, and a cost undertaking, and then who will pay for it and all those different things. But yes, could it be done? I, I share your frustration.
I say, as in a, in a three-year period, we recreated the atom bomb.
Yeah.
Not that I'm crazy about atom bombs, but we did it.
Right.
And we could do this, too. And the, and the reason why we're thinking about putting wind turbines on the most productive agricultural land in the world is because we have access to transmission lines. That's the only reason.
Well, it's more than that, because of course, you're going to have to have all the factors.
And the wind.
And the, great resource, and landowners who want to use their land for that purpose. So, if they have the agricultural land, it's their, you know, it's their land, and they're saying, this will help me continue that agricultural land, as opposed to maybe do something else with it or lose that. Again, from a property rights perspective, it's because those people wanted to use their land in that way. That's, no one's telling them they have to do that, it's all based on their own use of the property rights to go with that. Now, the free market also comes into play, because if that energy doesn't, isn't at an appropriate price, it's, also the project doesn't go forward.
So, here's why this is important. Most of the western United States that you see in gray up there on the left-hand part of that map has a population of nearly zero. And that, and that land has a value of nearly zero. And because we have been unwilling to wake up and realize that we have a problem on our hands, we're in the process of, of, uh, creating a potential problem that we don't understand. And here's the potential problem. Yankton and Minnesota, whether they know it or not, and Iowa are on very, very important migration routes. We do not understand those migration routes. We see the ducks and we see the geese. We don't see the tiny little birds that weigh an ounce or two. Now, if we fill up the middle west of this country with wind turbines, those, those little birds get a vote. And their vote is final. And if they change their migration routes, because we have filled up the middle west with large obstacles, Minnesota and the lake area of South Dakota will become potentially uninhabitable because of biting insects, like sand flies, for example, and mosquitoes, that those little birds eat in great quantities. Now, I say this because I go back to my example the last time we got together. DDT won the Nobel Prize in the 1940s. And the reason why DDT won the Nobel Prize in the 1940s is because we had just come out of the Second World War, and you've probably seen video of people getting doused with pow, white powder in Europe and in the Far East. They were getting doused because they were covered with vermin. And so it'd have a life-saving effect after World War II, and it received the Nobel Prize in 1948. By 1972, a few decades later, we found out that it had devastating effects. We didn't know that. We had the best of intentions. The same thing is true of Roundup, just recently taken off the market. Well-intentioned, very well-intentioned. But the unintended effect has had devastating effects on people's health. And if we fill up the Midwest with wind turbines and we disrupt migratory routes that have existed for eons, just because we're too lazy to figure out how to get across that silly border with our, the cyclical nature of our electrical power, we will regret it, believe me. And as I say, you know, us people think, we think we're really smart. Well, guess what? Wildlife, they make their decision and they get the final vote. We do not know, we've had a 20-year history with wind turbines in this country. Basically, it's been exponential growth, as Chris Olson put in his report. And when you have exponential growth over a 20-year period, probably two-thirds of that growth, maybe even three-fourths of that growth, have happened within the last 10 years. That's how an exponential curve works. We don't know what the impact will be. We simply don't know.
You know, and again, I'm not gonna get too deep, obviously, in the environmental, that's not my area. But of the things that we're doing that impact wildlife, especially birds and bats, there's probably nothing to get studied and continues to get studied after the fact than, than wind energy projects. So the good news is, from a county perspective, US Fish and Wildlife and your state equivalents, absolutely. So it gets studied ahead of time. So if there is impact to a species that is not appropriate, projects can get shut down. And the projects are very expensive to build, so they have incredible amount of effort going into it. More so than these other, than other areas that we look at. And, I mean, by a magnitude more. Additionally, South Dakota, again, has a great state-level process too, where they also do post-construction monitoring as well. So it, yeah, you're not wrong to say that there can always be unintended consequences we can't, you know, factor in as we sit here today. Again, we do have a long history. But the difference on this industry versus others is the amount of attention and review of it ongoing that it has versus other things. So chemicals and some other things can have a different impact than in actual, wind projects get more attention on this than really anything you could imagine.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to wind power, I'm not opposed to solar power. But I am opposed to foolishness. All it would take is for somebody to make up their mind that we were gonna get across that borderline between the green and the gray. And we could do it, this is the United States of America, it's not the Soviet Union. We could figure it out, and we could make it happen. And that land out there on the left side of that borderline is, I mean, I know people like living out there, but it's uninhabitable.
It's also public land. And we're at a point here where the scope of this commission is to hear from you guys. On if you guys want it for Yankton or not, the scope of this commission is not to say, yeah, we can transmit over the Black Hills, or we can transmit over Gillette, which is one of the largest open pit coal, coal mines in the United States. The scope of what we're here to do is hear from you guys and see, today, with the evidence provided, make a decision for wind energy in Yankton, South Dakota. I'm not here to, I'm from Cody, Wyoming, I just moved back from Cody, Wyoming, guys. I'm from here, but I lived there for the last five years. I know the state of Wyoming really well. I know you look at those boundaries, and it follows BLM, National Forests. It follows mountain ranges and topographical features that are way beyond Planning Commission and Yankton, South Dakota's control. My job is, whether or not I agree with wind or not, does not matter. My job is to represent the interest of you guys here in this room with current technology, current facts and studies, and the greatest good for the greatest number. I've driven the I-90, as many of you have, I-80, most of that area out there. Yep, wind projects could go there. But today, with the facts, is wind energy a good fit for us? That's for us to hear from you guys. And then for us to write our policies to protect the property owners who want it and make money, and the property owners who may be near it and secondhand smoke off of it, right? Um, the adverse effects. And that's today's job. Five years from now, maybe the decimal restriction on, at 1.1 blade height will be 25 decibels, right? I don't know, I'm not a scientist. I can't, I don't have a magic eight ball that shows me what wind energy will be in five years. Today, based on the facts that were given from Next Era and other third parties and community input, is it a good fit today? 12 months from, from now, we can review it again, or the commission can review it again, based on updates to technology, more studies, more property values being considered. But it's not our job to figure out if one day the Black Hills and Custer-Gallatin National Forest and all these other public lands are gonna be included into our SWIP, south, southern power, what is it?
Southwest Power Pool.
Southwest Power Pool. That's not what we're here for. I'm here to hear from you guys. We thank Next Era for being here. I wanna hear from you guys. Unequivocally, is it a good fit for you, your property ownership, what your viewpoint is? That's today. Let's, let's solve the current state. The future state can be reviewed by the planning commissioners here to come. Let's go over today's hurdle. So if you guys are okay with that, we heard from Next Era, we can always ask them questions and engage with them during your guys' public input and between your public input, let's, let's get you guys talking. You guys came out here tonight, let's hear from you.
Thanks, Sam. All right. Do you guys have any more on your presentation?
No, that's it. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, um, I guess I'd like to remind everybody that we're also talking about wind energy ordinance and changing our zoning ordinance to deal with that. We're not talking specifically about Next Era's project. They haven't even come before us for a conditional use permit or anything. So I guess I would keep it in the context of our zoning ordinance as far as their actual project, that they may be coming to us for a permit. We're not necessarily talking about that tonight. Like Sam was saying, we wanna hear what you have to say about the wind ordinance that is presented. It's been in the packet, talked about at last meeting, everybody had that available to go over it. And we wanna see what the public input is based on the actual wind ordinance and the language that's in it that we were talking about tonight. So with that, um, before the board goes over actual definitions or ordinances, I guess I think it'd be prudent to open it up to public comment first on the definitions in Article 26. So, um, with that, is there anybody wishes to make a public comment? As I said earlier, let's try and keep it to two minutes, it's already nine o'clock. Let's try and keep it two minutes apiece, um, keep it concise. So is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Good evening, Robert Burnson, Yankton, appreciate the couple of minutes. Um, I was on the wind advisory task force, we can make, I know we can make your job real simple, because 99% of people don't want it. End of story. I don't know why we're still here. But, um, so last time we brought this up, that people don't want it, period. We heard about, talked about this for three months, and we heard everything. Story's good, story's bad, but we heard it, and there were other meetings in the community. Nobody wants them. The only people who want them are getting paid. That's what it basically boils down to. I think the two-mile limit that's in the, that we recommended as a minimum was a compromise between five and 10. Okay, so I think that's very moderate. Now, the two-mile, people go, oh, we can't do anything with two miles, woe is us. Okay, it's not. Because these guys who wanna do these projects can knock on the door and say, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, we wanna put a wind turbine up here. Okay, and they can spread the community development impacts by doing so. So I think that two miles, if we are gonna have, even allow them at all, I think they should be regulated based on that, based on the premise that most people don't want them here. And if you do, you're gonna have to jump through some hoops. I think that's a reflection of the popular, um, opinion. And then just real quick, I do not believe that there is no effect on property values. You got a beautiful house here and another with a wind turbine next to it. I mean, I don't need a university study to tell me something's wrong with that picture. Okay, there's clearly an impact there. There's clearly erosion on rural tax bases over the long term. And these things tend to get bigger when they upsize them. We hear about saving the schools, they're gonna bring all the money to the schools. Maybe they don't know in South Dakota, the state takes that money back, every dollar comes in, dollar comes out. So that's a fact. We have a lot of wind, you bring up great points about slamming these feet, these, these projects up against population centers. It's a result of poor planning, same thing happened in Nebraska. They've known about the wind in Cherry County for 50 years. Did they make an energy corridor? Did they do the good planning? No, we have to have these things in our backyard now. And that's not, that's not, that's not good planning.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And when you come up, just please state your name, I'm trying to get my constituents' names written down, so, thanks.
My name's Randy Wagner, I live here in Yankton County. I've been here about three years, and prior to that, I lived in Wayne County, Nebraska. There is a turbine development in that area. I lived in a two-mile radius, my home near about 20 some towers. Next Era was, Shoals Project was there. But what I wanted to discuss with Professor Anderson is, you were talking about the real world, about property values. So I've got a story for you. And one of my friends told me, this happened about a year ago. And it was in a tower, a farm that had towers right on the edge of Wayne County. And then another farm that sold that was about three miles away outside of Wayne County with no turbines. They were both similar farms, both dryland, clay, and generally rolling hills. And the farm with two turbines on it brought 12,000, little over 12,000 acre, which is a tremendous amount of money. But the farm with no turbines brought 16,100. On a 160-acre farm, that's $640,000 difference in valuation. So that just happened a year ago. So that's a start of something happening in Wayne County down there. Now, if that's why that happened, I don't know. Now, there's a, and I'm sure there's more than one example of that coming. So you can get status from Ucal-Davis and places like that, or super liberal colleges, you know, that tend to think one way or the other, but-
Sir, would you talk-
I'm talking about the real world here.
Sir, would you talk into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the recordings.
But, uh, kinda what some of the farmers that I've talked to thinking is that it's so much more time-consuming planting the farms that have the turbines on them because of the small number of fields, and it's just more kind, time-consuming if you have a 36-word planer. And another thing, a friend, there was a meeting down at Center, Nebraska, there's a big wind project down in that area, the proposal going in from Wausau Cleardown to Center. And there was a lady that, I wasn't there at this meeting, but this lady got up and was telling that she's a crop adjuster for a, a private crop insurance company. And she said that the yields are coming in on, around the turbine developments, the corn yields are lower than where there aren't turbines, right in a localized area. It's because the turbine's bringing warm air down during the night and warming up the ground temperatures and affecting yields. That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, anybody else want to make a public comment?
Well, I'm glad you asked me to talk to you. Because I'm gonna say to you, everything that glitters isn't gold.
Could you state your name for the record?
And we had the A-Team here tonight, and boy, did it glitter. They had reasons for us that I don't think any of us ever expected to hear, why we need this wind project. The thing about it is, they're so smart that they put a local, a local lake, which brings back good memories to many of us as the name of the wind project. Swan Lake, I grew up around Swan Lake. I grew up by Turkey Ridge. My farm is between Turkey Ridge and Swan Lake. It's right along Highway 8, 18. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say, the only reason they're looking at this area is because it's cheaper to develop here than to develop in other areas. That's the only reason they're here. If they went into Colorado and they went up into the passes and put the power there, they'd have all the wind they need. But they know they can't get it because the skiers would not allow them to take and put wind towers into their ski runs. You know, this gentleman right here was right about 90% of what he was saying. When he talks about the little birds that have, that, that saved this part of the country, he's very correct. When I was a young boy, my mother took me out, we learned to know- When I was a young boy, my mother took me out and we learned to know the birds. And you know, I did this before. I'm probably the oldest man in this room. I'm a fourth generation on, on, on the land. My great-great-grandparents came here from Russia and looked at the Turkey Ridge Valley and said, "This is our new home." And you know, the first generation lived in dugouts, right here by Yankton, in the cliffs. They got here so late, they couldn't go out in the prairie because they defroze to death. But that's neither here nor there. What I want to say to you is, I want to, I'm talking common sense like you're talking. I, I have a very wide window of what's happened in this area. The first thing that happened, I farmed with, my father farmed with horses, so I go back to that age, prior modern equipment. I also farmed, but I farmed with all modern equipment. But I'll tell you what happened. When I grew up, I grew up in the 50s and 60s.
Sir, we're over the limit, can we?
Pardon?
We're over the limit already? Can we wrap it up with?
No, I, they shut me off the last time. I hope you don't. I, I need a little more time. What, what happened was, you know, they're saying they're doing this for the good of the people. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to say, wait a minute. The farmer has a right to say that, too. When I was farming, I fed my own family and 53 other families. So I think I, I have done something for, for this country by feeding people. I didn't have to take and go to somebody else and say, "Hey, you know, let me put my, my cattle in your pasture so I can make a little more money." I did it on my own. The other thing is, he is very correct. I just came back from Africa and I toured the Serengeti. And I saw what we have ruined in this country in the last 100 years. The Serengeti reminded me of western South Dakota when I was a kid that high. There was grass out there like that. There was wildlife. You saw pronghorn run all over the place. There were deer, there were jackrabbits. We've killed all of those. We've killed the bison. We've killed just about all the pronghorns. You don't see them. Now you drive across the state and if you see one or two, that's a lot. In, in Africa, they have rules for life, for wildlife. They don't put any oil roads where there's wildlife because they won't cross it. And wildlife is their livelihood.
So sir, I guess going through this, do you, I guess, do you support, I guess, the restrictions and everything we've put in the ordinance then? Or is, I guess, is that what you're getting to? Or?
I'm, I'm, I'm like you are. I'm not against wind power. I'm not against nuclear power. I'm not even against ethanol. And my corn produces ethanol. And, and that's another great thing. Because when the electric cars run out of electricity, if you've got a car that is able to burn ethanol, we're cheapening your price of the fuel. But that's not, not the, the real reason I got up. People do things for different reasons. And what's right for them probably isn't right for me, probably isn't, isn't right for any of you. Don't be buffaloed into doing something that you'll regret. Because those towers will be here for 100 years. They will be problems. You mentioned it, the equipment's getting bigger. And, and when my renter spreads out his 32-year-old planter, he doesn't want a little fence or a little field. He doesn't want a wind tower. He wants to be able to plant and get out of there. And so, yes, this, this will definitely affect land values. And in the long run, it won't be good for the farmer. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your name for the record?
Gordon Waltenner. Thank you.
My name is Lori Sletton, and I live out by Pearson's Corner. I didn't plan on talking today, but as you saw, people came up and were handing me petitions here. I, we live out on the county line, and I know three farmers who actually want wind turbines on their land because they need a little extra money. I know dozens of people who are farmers who live on the land that absolutely don't want them. And I haven't gone around and canvassed the whole county. Those are just the people that I know. The only people I do know that really want them are the people that own land, they inherited it or something, they bought it and they don't live there. But those of us that farm the ground, I'm a fifth-generation farmer, we don't want them at all. A lot of people can't be here. My family's out there trying to get the, I'm a little sore. The blessed of Windrowerd Works, we're trying to cut hay and it wants to break down every 30 minutes. So we kind of had this idea, we have so many people that have other places to be, that we would do these petitions and we're going to give them to the county commissioners. I know that we have about 60 names, and as you saw, people kept bringing me petitions. So we weren't going to bring them to you today, but I just wanted you to know that. And we're not standing on the street corners at Walmart, and I'm too busy trying to plant and stuff to, to be going around to my neighbors and getting them to sign. These are just people that we talked to. I, I know it's the mass majority, that is not what I meant to say, that do not want them here. This is our agriculture land. This is why we want it protected. We want our families protected. We came to the task force and gave them hundreds of reasons, concerns, and they listened to them, and they did their research, and they did a great job. Our petitions say, these are people saying, "We would like a ban on wind farms," and that's, "We don't want to use that industrial wind in, in, in our agriculture land," or "we want five-mile setbacks." And we do go by zoning. I cannot put a hog farm on Broadway. And they should not be putting their industrial wind on our agriculture land. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Lori.
My name is Terry Clark. I live in Wakanda, but I have family that lives in Yankton. I spend a lot of time in Yankton County. I'm into Yankton practically every day of the week, do my business here, and it's very nearby. And what happens here in Yankton County will affect my life and will affect what the other counties around here do as well, I believe. I didn't think I'd be talking about property rights today, but that was an opening, opening part of their presentation. And I just want to say, my property rights end where they start interfering with other people's property rights. They're only focusing on one side of the story, the people that are going to make money from these. But these towers are enormous, the equipment, the roads, everything. It's, I was to most of those task force meetings. There was a lot of information presented, and the task force went through every different type of concern you could have about these, and they did a very good job of sifting through those concerns and how you might try to protect people from them. But what I see is, commercial wind has very small amount on the scale here of what would be a potential benefit. And the possible dangers, the possible downfalls, all the problems are enormous. I mean, they just far outweigh any possible benefit. I think it's a no-brainer to say, "This is not good." And honestly, I think they should go back to the drawing board and re-engineer wind so it doesn't have such a huge negative impact on all those around it. I also, just will repeat one more time, I'm sure you've heard it before from me, but I believe these are industrial developments. They don't belong in ag land. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishes to speak? I got one coming from the back here.
Hi, I'm Tandra Baker, and I'm going to make this very easy. I do not support, again, what's been said, the industrial wind farms in agricultural land. It has, none of them have ever proven to actually be safe. We get a lot of information, a lot of studies, that say, "Here's what we believe, here's what we see." But a lot of those studies also overlook the negative impacts that have been proven. One of the things that, again, you guys heard me last month, the infrasound or the low-frequency noise is a very real issue. And there are hundreds of doctors who will attest to this. Lincoln County had one when they were going through this process. There are several in Iowa who have significant reports about it. And unfortunately, we talk about economics, yeah, it's going to impact our industry and our economics in a very negative way if we bring those in here. What works in other areas of the country may work there just fine. That doesn't mean it works in every area. And if anyone has to work so hard to convince us of that, I start to kind of question why. The other parts that I really, really struggle with are business practices. Why are there gag orders put on people who do sign the contracts? Why can they not disclose that to anyone else? We know that, because unfortunately gag orders are only as good as a person paying the gag order, that they share what they're being offered for money. And that's not consistent. Why? That seems strange to me. Who is the actual parent company or owners or stockholders of NextEra? It's not on, on US land. Let's do our research. Let's wake up. Let's quit selling ourselves out and actually start to be good stewards of the land, good stewards of the animals. That is what we're here for. And that is what in agriculture is, that is what the Midwest is. This is where we support each other, we work together, and that is a part of all of your guys' jobs as well, which I know you're doing your best right now to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir.
I'm Alan Ward from Vibring, South Dakota. I live south, south of town. I'm an organic farmer. And one of the things that I do because I'm an organic farmer is I produce clean food. One of the things that are a problem with the power system is that the energy is there only when the wind blows. And then when it's, when the wind's blowing, sometimes you even have to shut the machines down because the wind is blowing too hard. Those things will, don't come to any advantage as far as the generation of electric power. And at the same time, if those units are put on our ground, ground that is designed by God to be generating lots and lots of good food, we are coming to a situation where, I think, was mentioned, we're being sold out. We need to keep the ground that we have in the operation that it's meant to be, and that's producing food. Electric power can take place in desert lands. In fact, if those units are put in this area, going back to what was said over here, it's going to turn this area into a desert. Why not start with a desert, a place where there's not very much wildlife? Why take something that has wildlife, that flies, that crawls, that digs into the ground and kill it? I don't think that would be right. I'm against wind turbines because they would destroy my livelihood and it'd also destroy a lot of Mother Nature. Good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public wishes to come up, comment? Last chance before we go into board discussion on Article 26. All right, I will close public comment. We can go into board discussion on Article 26. And I guess we're going to start with the definitions and looking, we didn't really make any changes last month. I guess Sherry's suggestions on the definitions, a lot of those I think are good ones, and I think we could start there.
Why he's doing that, who handed this out last month that has the definitions and it says, "Delete, delete"?
That's from Sherry.
Oh, yeah, I had sent that bill to give to everybody.
Okay, sounds good. I didn't know who it was from.
Yeah, when we did the task force, we decided that the planning commission could deal with definitions, and that's why it's there. So we really didn't discuss any of these at the task force. When we did solar, we moved all the definitions into the definitions. So what is listed here is what's currently in the wind ordinance. And at the very end on the second page, there is a definition, in the front definitions, that describes wind energy systems. So I'm not one for redundancy, and I'm not one for putting definitions in that you aren't using.
Right.
So really, the reason the deletes are there is that it's never listed in the ordinance. An aggregate project is not listed in the ordinance. We don't have commercial WECs anymore because now we are calling them large systems. Construction, there's a duplicate, we have actual construction and start of constructions in the definitions. So really, we probably don't need construction, we probably don't need fall zone because we don't use it. Large electric power facilities, we don't use. And then a couple on the back of that sheet, person is a duplicate. We have person actually in the front. And route, we don't use. Rotor radius, we don't use. We use diameter. So those, I guess, in my opinion, can all be deleted. There were a couple that we actually, we definitely need to add, was non-participating and participating. And then there were a few minor inclusions for small or large, and then producing 50KW was our delineation for large, so.
This is kind of a minor issue, Sherry, but on the bottom of the page there, where we say, "Large wind energy conversion systems," we then just say WECS. Shouldn't that be, have an L in the beginning of it?
Mine does.
Mine does, too.
Really?
Yeah.
Are you, are you looking at?
The version with the blue on it? Did you get one of these last time?
He's looking at this one that was in the packet. It just says, "Large wind energy," and it says WECs.
Oh, see, that's the old one. Yep. So this is the one that says, so if you don't have a copy of it, Bill, did you have an extra copy of this? Oh, there you go.
Good. Like Rosanna, Rosanna Dan, I used to say, "Never mind."
Oh, you were probably wondering where the heck I was reading all that stuff from.
Thank you. Thank you very much. There you go. So, yeah, I guess moving it out of, moving all the definitions out of Article 26 and into the front definitions would be consistent with the rest of the ordinance. It'd be kind of the same thing we did with Article 29. We didn't list any definitions there.
Yep.
Up to the front, so I think. Up to the front, so I think that's where it should go.
And I kind of, when I went, before our last meeting, I went through and just on the old version, I went X if I didn't think it was necessary, and circled my thoughts out, and it pretty much matched up what you had. Because the big one was non-participating and participating.
Right.
That we use in our ordinance, but it wasn't listed. And then just those minor things that you have in there too.
And I do think we should delete the definition wind energy system that's in the front because that's, we'll have one for small and we'll have one for large, I don't think we maybe need that. The 75 feet doesn't apply anymore anyway. We changed that for height. So I would delete that last one in blue as well.
So I guess I'd be comfortable adopting pretty much all the changes that you got listed on the definitions. Yeah, and the large wind energy conversion systems, I see you got a note there. It's 50 kilowatts are over for that definition.
Correct, yeah.
It's a change, but yeah, pretty much everything that's in your revision there. I would agree with. Is there anything else on the definitions portion? So, moving on, pretty much the whole original ordinance, we've got crossed out. So, if you go all the way back to the new, Section 2601, starting with purpose. Assuming that everybody, at least on the board, is familiar with what is in every, in this ordinance right now, so I guess, starting at the top, is there anything you want to change, we can go section by section, or if you just want to point out where you have differences? I guess my first revision would be all the way down to section 2605, our design requirements. Get down to item J. Right there, I guess, we got small, small SWEX in A and B. Small's kind of redundant, when you got SWEX stands for small. Small wind energy conversions, I'd delete there. I guess it's just some nitpicking things, but.
Scroll back up to setbacks, please.
So the setbacks right there, that has to do with the small wind energy systems. Large wind energy system, which I, I guess, just to kind of close out, the small wind energy system, I don't think there's much controversy, there's nothing to really talk about there, you're pretty much, if it's under 50 kilowatts, there's a few rules as far as what you can do, but they're primarily the landowner's own personal use, and we're not getting too heavily involved in that. So, when we get up to the large wind energy conversion systems. Anything to change as far as actual wording, or adding anything new?
So when you have the word primarily, did, when we were in the task force, did that mean more than 50%? Or what did we decide, you know? Use primarily for off-site consumption?
Where are you reading this? Oh, right there.
2615, what does primarily mean? More than 50?
We never discussed it.
Well, yeah, and that causes a little bit, because if you had, say, like, a large business or something, they want to have 75 kilowatts, and it was for self-use, then are they regulated by this, or not?
If you didn't like that wording, you could say, instead of primarily for off-site consumption, just say, and it's essentially tied to the grid. So if you're 50 KW and tied to the grid, then you're a large.
So instead of and used primarily for off-site, if you're rated capacity of 50 kilowatt or more, and tied to the grid?
I don't know if that's the proper term to use, tied to the grid, but that's the general intent. Would that, would that be better?
Yeah, I think, because I just, with primarily, what does that mean?
Yep.
Got that, Bill?
Yes.
Yep. I guess, as we go farther into like the agreements and studies, last month, it was talked about with possibly adding like a noise study to it. Is that necessary when we've already got noise listed under 26, Section 2615, item L? Basically, can't exceed that level? Do you need a noise study, or?
Well, I think the difference there is one sets the limit, the other proves the limit, is being met. And so, a pre and a post-sound study is what I had listed here, FG, which would be H, right after the, well, we should actually probably put it up above the G. But it doesn't matter, but I, I do think it is a good addition, just to, just to have it documented. This is what we were, this is what we are after.
Am I gonna agree with that? And I guess going through the rest of it, I didn't find a wording or anything that I thought necessarily needed to be changed as far as clearing up anything.
You still need to touch base on B, on ultra-low frequency.
So I guess, I'm not sure what to do with the ultra-low frequency if the task, solar, or wind task force did not come up with anything at their meetings, we're basically just using that as a placeholder.
Yeah, it, there wasn't a lot of information on it. One thing to consider is your setback will take care of much of that. So if you have an adequate setback, you probably don't need B at this time. Unless someone can find something from another ordinance that's been used successfully, B maybe should be stricken.
Yeah, I guess I would agree, just because I don't know how we can leave something that says to be determined in the ordinance.
Yeah, exactly.
Let's, let's talk a little bit about setbacks. We want to get rid of the wind tower deal, all we gotta do is leave that two-mile setback in there. And that'll do it, that'll take care of it in the county. Pretty much. I think when I first started on the task force process, I think I would have supported a five-mile setback. I have a farm, piece of farm ground up near Aberdeen, and there's a wind energy tower 200, 300 feet from my property line. I hear it, I see it. Nobody lives within five miles of it, three miles of it. So I didn't feel it was a significant thing. But as I listened and read information, almost all the information that I read was dated, that was against wind power, was dated back in the 1990s or early 2000s. Almost all. I suppose there were some that weren't. And most of it probably isn't very accurate. Who knows? We've seen both sides of the information, I, I don't know which one. So I can't, I can't tell that. But I think the two-mile thing, in my opinion, should be viewed as a figure that can realistically allow it to come into the county if the people in the area want it. So we may have to say two miles with agreement of non-participation. Or we may say, well, 500 yards with agreement of neighbors. I talked to several several people in wind tower areas over the last two months. I haven't found a negative one yet. I know it was mentioned that 99% of the people are against it. Not, not in the people I talked to. There's a big percentage of them that, that don't care. And that's because they don't see him, and they're out there, which isn't a good, a good reason, but they look at it as it's economic development, looking forward to the future for providing electrical power. So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
To address that concern on right under the words facility setback requirements, we the wind task force, and you were there, of course, located no closer than the following regulations prescribed. However, the applicants of a large turbine may request the required setback to any category listed below be lessened. This request shall only be approved after the applicant obtains signed waivers from all property owners within the setback distance. Any authorized person, business, government, that is within the setback distance may waive the setback distance. The written waivers shall be permanently attached to the approved conditional use permit and filed as a permanent, permanent encumbrance against the legally described parcels for which the waiver is granted. And what that does is it, it says, all right, from a residence participating, and that would be, you are participating if you have agreed and you have as an authorized person waived your objection. It can be as close as one and a half times the total height. However, if you do not waive and are unwilling to waive your property rights, then it has to be two miles away. So the key here is that we're trying to balance, I think, the the rights of the landowners who want to receive the lease payments and the rights of the land, nearby landowners who don't want to look at or feel threatened by, or aggravated by the wind turbine. So, what we're doing is we've said, okay, wind turbine company, if you want to put a turbine here, and I think Alan's chart showed it, where it says 16-mile radius, or 16 total sections, go knock on the door and get agreement. That's what we've said. We haven't said you can't do it in this ordinance, or proposed ordinance. We've said you must get agreement from anybody within two miles. And of course, if you have an agreement, it has to be contractual and there has to be consideration in order to be contractual. So there has to be monetary consideration involved in that. And so, what we're saying is if you want to put up a wind turbine on my property and Don's property is right next door, and I'm gonna receive the lease payments, but Don's not gonna get any money, and he doesn't want it, if we didn't have that provision in there, my property rights would override Don's property rights. And so we're trying to balance the property rights of all of the landowners within two miles of the wind turbine itself. That's the reason why we and it wasn't easy to come up with this, because the idea was if you just have a two-mile setback and no alternative, no way for the wind company to get agreement, then that's true. You would sanitize Yankton County. But if you can get agreement from everybody within two miles of that wind turbine, and by the way, they would be overlapping as you place your, as you site your turbines, you would, you would be able to place your turbines as long as you get agreement. And it seems to me like that's the American way. Is that one of the, one of the rights that you have as a property owner is the peaceful and quiet enjoyment of your property. And Pete, the words peaceful and quiet are a perception because my peaceful and quiet isn't the same as somebody else's. And so the way you protect property rights from everybody who's in that region is you go out and knock on the door and you say, can I have your permission to put up a wind turbine within two miles of your house? And the person says, well, I'm not so sure, I don't, what am I getting out of it? Now it's up to the wind turbine company to get agreement. That, the onus is on the, on the corporation who wants to come into Yankton County and build their wind turbines. The onus is not on the property owners who don't want it. And so.
But
Go ahead.
But that doing it with the two-mile thing absolutely eliminates it, because you, you can pick, pick out any, any map of the county and then draw four square miles, and you're gonna find lots of houses, lots of landowners. And only one, you know, only one of them out of that whole 16 sections needs to say no.
Project feasibility is done with the two-mile setback and for a large-scale wind farm at this time, so if that's what this board and the representatives from our community feel is what we want to communicate in our ordinance, then the two-mile setback adds value to communicating that because project, product feasibility will be done, so.
You know, keeping in mind that what we're, what we're doing here is, is making a recommendation to the elected representatives. a recommendation to the elected representatives of the people, and those are the county commissioners. We're a sub-panel, and we're responding to the efforts of another sub-panel, the Wind Energy Task Force. They're the ones who wrote this. We're reviewing it as our responsibility is, and we're going to forward it to the Yankton County Commission. And they have, they have a right, and I'm quite certain that they will make changes. And so I agree with you. This is what we've heard, and this, and, and the recommendation should...
I mean, setback was mentioned by everyone who spoke tonight.
Not everyone.
In one way, shape, or form. Some people addressed it clearly, some people addressed it as other things, you know, ag land, non-conforming use, you know, different things like that, infrastr- sound from a community member. So, yeah, if we feel if it adds value to the voice of our community, then let's keep it in there and move forward with the setback recommendation of the two miles with agreements.
I guess, I would agree with that sentiment, I guess. If you really want less than two miles, if there's provision in there, to get less than two miles, and if you can win over the hearts and minds of people affected, then your setback's pretty minimal. And I guess, it was mentioned at previous meeting, the one point five times total height, saying maybe one point one times total height. I guess just to address that, I, I feel like one point five is more prudent, at least at a very minimum for right-of-way lines. And just because that would accommodate expansion in the future, it'd still be far enough away, something were to change, and keeping it one point five isn't that much of a difference from one point one, but it does give a little bit of space for growth. But, yeah, and I guess the main sticking point from all the input that I've heard is the two miles setback. And I guess, from everything that I've heard, that the vast majority of people feel like it should be greater than two miles, at least people I've talked to. And I know that's coming from a place of not wanting them at all, and making it as restrictive as possible to not come in, but I mean, that is, the sentiment is to make it more restrictive. And I think two miles, where, yeah, that's pretty harsh. We are a populated county. There's a lot of other things that are in our ordinance that limits the type of developments we can have, and this is not inconsistent with a lot of that.
I agree with, with Chris and the fact that the role of government is to, is when you have two people that are pursuing their liberty in this country, the job of government is allow each to do, do so without one infringing or taking over the other one. And that's what I believe this, these setbacks are doing, in the fact that if you, you know, suppose, you know, one of the next chairs said they, they listened to all the testimony. Out of those, out of the task force, it was very overwhelming. We don't want wind farms at all, at all. And the way our ordinance is currently written, the wind energy is just going to run over, can just come in and do whatever they want. This is a, a medium, this is the middle. This is the middle of it. And the, the thing about it is that where are the people who support this? Where are they? How many hours did we spend with task force?
Well, you also got to see where are all the people that don't care, because that, that's probably sixty percent of the population.
Then where, then where are they? The people who...
Well, they don't care.
Right. But here's, the thing about it is we have people here who care and care a lot, because it affects their lives. It's not just about money, it's about their livelihood, it's about their lives, it's about their health, and, and what, and their children. That's the thing. And like, and like Mike was saying, we get this wrong. What is that going to do? This is a happy medium.
And it's a foundation that can be reviewed
Exactly.
in the future, when technology changes and opportunities change and studies are updated to reflect current trends. This is just a backbone that we can use, or whomever volunteers for this next time, they can use to shape decisions moving forward. But for today, it resounds everything that we've heard from you guys, because large-scale wind energy with the two-mile setback, the disposal fee, which we'll get to here in a little bit, between those two nails, the coffin is basically shut. So, and we heard that from them last week. They, they said it, if you don't adjust those, basically you're putting a nail in the coffin. And that's fine, because that's what the community voiced, so.
So is there anything else on setbacks? Okay. Anything to change, add, delete, in the decommissioning? This, to me, it looks like it's almost, almost identical to the solar.
Very similar. That's where it came from, isn't it?
Yeah, it was plagiarized from that.
We made some wording changes, but that was a...
Probably solar for wind.
Well, we tightened up a few words just to make it clear, more clear, who had responsibilities and who had authorities, but other than that, it came from the solar ordinance. And so it's, we're treating both
The same.
similarly, not exactly the same, because they aren't the same.
Yep. I'm good to move past decommissioning, if everyone else is.
So really, the only thing we've changed is the pre and post-sound study we've added. So somewhere around NO, we should have that added to the requirements for the CUP as well. However, it's listed up there just to stay in order, but, so the CUP permit reflects everything before. This was not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So we still have to have another month, public hearing?
If you move to move it to a public hearing tonight, it would go to July night for official hearing.
So what do we, do we have to vote on it, or?
Yeah.
You would vote on the ordinance of the night, today would be a vote to move it to a public hearing on July night.
Basically, are we done?
I don't, I don't think we need a vote to do that.
No.
We motion in the...
Yeah, we'll just advertise it as a public hearing.
You just make that decision next month.
Okay.
Okay.
So basically, do we want to keep working on this, or are we ready to move it forward?
I'm ready.
I'd say we're ready for a public hearing next month.
I agree.
So the minor changes we did here, we can see next month, and then we can actually vote on it and send it to the commission August.
Right. Right.
So.
So is there anything else to add, change, delete? Anything want to discuss more, or if not, add it to the agenda for a public hearing next month? Will do.
Just one more.
Yep.
This is, this is exactly about the same thing we did with, with the hog requirements. We regulated them out of the county. That's all.
If the county wants to regulate out agriculture, I mean, it's not a stretch that the county wants to regulate out something like this. Okay, we have one final public comment. Should I keep it to two minutes? Anybody wish to say any final words before we adjourn for the night? One once, twice. Come on up.
Thank you. I, I'm not going through a lot of what's already been indicated. Thank you for the opportunity to make a few comments. I would, again, go back to what has been stated, and that the work that was done by the committee, the ordinance committee, in this draft, was very extensive. I myself visited four different wind farm areas with the idea of looking both pro and con. And my conclusions are based on what we heard, what I saw, and also talking to people in these wind farm areas. And I would fully support the, maintaining a minimum setback of at least two miles, and that's from property lines for participating, or non-participating members. So I would support a two-mile setback. So, end of story. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
I can't wait to meet you.
I was at Yankton this morning, so.
When are you going to be back, Dan? It's been a pleasure.